I call to order City Council meeting of May 10, 2010. We will start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So let me do a little introduction here. We have a very special guest. We are participating in our Mayor for the Day, Mike Carlson. He's here next to me. He's going to be a leading part of the beginning part of our meeting. This was all part of a bidding of our Educational Foundation, Spring Fling. Very successful event. I believe Educational Foundation has raised about $1,000,000.00 this year. A lot of that came that evening with a goal of 1.7 over the next two to three weeks. So it's a great organization. It's a great concept where community, of course, is giving to nothing better than our schools and the education of our children. And we're fortunate to have one of our stars here, Mike, who I do have one story to kind of do the introduction with. I sent a quick note to our staff introducing that Mike will be here at the meeting and as part of our afternoon that I would be walking around City Hall. And within 23 minutes of sending my email message, I had four out of six responses from the managers of City Hall. Their comments were, "My pleasure." And this was my request. You know, we could spend five or 10 minutes showing the new mayor kind of the ropes of City Hall here. "My pleasure." Second one, "Absolutely." Third comment, "We'll be ready." And the last one, "A visit not from one but from two mayors. Who could pass up an opportunity like that?" And so with our new mayor tonight, I've also learned and respect our city staff. Here we have four managers who are very, very brief with their comments, very efficient, very quick with their response, and actually kind of a lot of fun having them with their response. So congratulations to Mark and your team. And I'll turn now the meeting back over to our mayor for the day here and part of the evening.
Are there any changes to the order of agenda? A report from closed session. Mr. Rubens, please.
Mr. Mayor, there are no reportable items from closed session tonight.
Item four on the agenda, Council Communications and Announcements.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'll start. First up, nice to have you up here. My first item is about today. I spent a couple hours at the youth center doing interviews for the Youth Advisory Council. It took us a couple hours. We got through about 10 today. We have another round tomorrow for the five open seats. So, Mr. Mayor, whenever you want to step down and join Youth Advisory Council, I think you're a couple years away. So it was really entertaining though to interview all those really, really just impressive youth of our community who really want to get involved and really love this town and want to help out in some way. And then my second item is we will be having another fire board meeting on the budget on Wednesday. We had one recently a couple weeks ago where we didn't come to an agreement on the budget. All of the commissioners wanted to see less reserves being spent in the wrap-down of the 18 months. So the chief has put together some possible cuts that won't affect service, and he'll be bringing them back to us on Wednesday. And we will be having discussion and maybe a decision then. And the next step, we bring it back to this council. So that's all I got. Pleasure to have you there, Mr. Mayor. And the other thing I wanted to remind folks is that tomorrow is the Chamber of Commerce luncheon. Hope folks can make it.
Mr. Mayor, nice to have you. I'm sure Mr. Klein is very appreciative because he's finally older than somebody on this. Actually Christine probably is. That's another whole story. Mr. Mayor, I don't really have anything tonight except that I would echo what the other gentleman said about fire board and the luncheon tomorrow.
So the only thing I have is I did attend two outside meetings. One was the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We've got projects coming up. We're going to do a tour of those projects on the 15th of May. And then the other meeting I attended was the Library JPA. And the library does have a, they've got a new website. It's kind of, I think they call it e-library or something of that nature. And they, as part of that also, they have a Chinese language website now. So any folks who speak Chinese or want to visit the website and view it in Chinese, they can now do so. And we will be getting a report from our library administrator about that in the future. So I didn't want to say too much about it, but he'll be coming and showing us the results of those projects.
I have nothing to report. Next on the agenda is presentations. We actually have five. And the mayor and I will be doing that from the floor down there. So we have something very, very special here, and I'll let our mayor start it off.
Commending John C. Reed for his 29 years of dedicated service to the San Carlos Police Department. Whereas John C. Reed has faithfully served the community of San Carlos, his hometown, since September 28, 1981, beginning as a community service officer and then a reserve police officer. And whereas John C. Reed was hired as a police officer on September 11, 1984, and over years has held the positions of field training officer, detective, sergeant, investigations supervisor, and finally commander. And then, and whereas John C. Reed is a graduate of the University of San Francisco, the West Point Leadership Program, the Post Supervisory Leadership Institute, and the FBI's California Law Enforcement's Executive Development Program. And whereas John C. Reed has contributed to the betterment of our community and police department by developing a peer-supported and critical incident stress debriefing team, the Department's First Chaplain Program, and Department's First Honor Guard. Now therefore, we, Mike Carlson. Mayor of the City of San Carlos, to hereby command, John C. Reed's contributions and dedication to the citizens of San Carlos. Thank you for your dedicated service. We wish you well in the future and this 10th day of May 2010.
If I could just add something as we pass the plaque on here. John is one of these special people, and we actually have quite a few of them in our department. He's homegrown. He's home-driven. He's home, you know, San Carlos. And so he knows us. He knows our people. He knows our hills. And we're going to miss him. He's just moving up the street a little bit, up the peninsula. And I'm sure we'll see him around. But thank you for all your dedication in making our city so safe, City of San Carlos. Thank you. So next on the agenda, you can stay up here with me. No, come on. Stay up here with me. We have a lot of work to do here tonight. We have three businesses. We have Bullfrog Media, Bay Area Hypnosis Center, and Pioneer Millworks. Can the owners, representatives of those companies, come join me up here? So we have a proclamation. This is for our program of green in San Carlos. This will actually add and make 26 local businesses certified green in our city of San Carlos. To accomplish this, they basically have to go through a vigorous effort and mainly areas of solid waste reduction, recycling, energy and water conservation, and pollution prevention. And here we have number 24, 25, 26. We welcome you. Let me get the proclamation and kind of paraphrase a few items here. So first, again with Bullfrog and Pioneer Millworks, they partner with all sorts of organizations to bring San Carlos Green Program, which has certified 1,000 firms as green businesses in the state. It's a partnership that we work with. As I mentioned, they have to comply with all sorts of regulations. They completed the checklist. And so now I will say and we will say that therefore proclaim that we mayors this evening proclaim, Bullfrog Media and Pioneer Millworks commended for being chosen as San Carlos Certified Green Businesses. So thank you all very much. And I'll just hand over the mic. If you could just introduce yourself and tell us what your product is. I think I know what yours is, but tell us about yours too.
Hi, I'm Chris Sella-Ran with Bullfrog Media. And we do branding and marketing through print design, web design, and social media consulting.
I'm Don Mancini with Pioneer Millworks. We supply doors, windows, and molding to the residential building community.
Thank you very much. And on a little larger stationary, we have Senator Joe Semenian also has a proclamation. And third from Ira Ruskin, our Assemblyman, we also have from California Legislature, a proclamation from him also. So with that, I'll pass that, all these on to you for Bullfrog and for Pioneer Millworks. Congratulations and welcome. Thank you. Thank you very, very, very much. Okay. Can we have our police chief, Greg? Is he, come on up? Actually, the three of us were earlier in City Hall and into the depths of our police force. It was a pretty interesting tour. So what was your favorite spot in the police department?
I actually have no idea.
He thinks like a lot of you gentlemen do. Okay. This too, we have a handful tonight, but they're all very special. This is National Police Week, Peace Officers Memorial Day, and San Mateo County Peace Officers Memorial Day. And let me just again paraphrase a little bit, a few of the items. Whereas our Police Officer Memorial Day and National Police Week were first established by John F. Kennedy. Whereas law enforcement officers willingly perform hazardous duties to protect and defend their community and are often called upon to sacrifice their lives in guarding our loved ones, our property, and our government against those who would violate the law. Whereas the people of our nation, our state, and our communities should commemorate those officers who have given their lives while providing services to protect their community. And so therefore, it will be proclaimed that our two mayors here proclaim, City Council of the City of San Carlos recognizes the week of May 12, National Police Week, the day of May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 4 as San Mateo County Peace Officers Memorial Day, this 10th day of May 2010. With that, great, congratulations. And please pass that on to your entire force. And Robert. Wow. See you coming there. That's good. Can we turn the lights off, see if it glows? Good, good. I like that. So we also have this week National Public Works Week. And so let me again hit a few items here. Whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community depends on public works, infrastructure, and core services. Where the mission of the City of San Carlos is to provide quality services and facilities in a fiscally sustainable, responsive, and friendly manner to foster a safe and healthy community. Whereas the replacement value of public works, infrastructure owned by the City of San Carlos is estimated at over $400 million. Is that your number? Very good. And whereas, I think this is really a great one. The attitude and the understanding of the community greatly influences the results which can be attained with the qualified and dedicated employees of San Carlos Department of Public Works. And so therefore, it's proclaimed that this week of May 16 through the 22nd is recognized as National Public Works Week in the City of San Carlos. And et cetera, et cetera, dated this 10th day of May 2010. Robert, congratulations. And that one there. And I think that is it. Anything else?
Check. Somebody going to give you a check?
We'll do that one from up there or from down here?
From down there.
Okay, we'll do that from here. So we have one other item. I don't have the agenda item. But we have our second trailer, emergency trailer in the City of San Carlos. And we have a presentation of some people that want to grant us and provide some money for building or buying some supplies. So with that, Scott, are you going to be the representative of that? Scott Marsters, welcome. And Tom Davids? Cindy Smith, welcome. So can I hand the mic over to someone or?
My name is Scott Marsters. And six months ago, I came to you and gave you a $3,000 donation for a CERT trailer from the Greater East San Carlos community. And tonight I have the pleasure of introducing two additional groups that will both give us, and I mean us, the City of San Carlos, checks for supplies for some of those trailers. And so I'd like to start by introducing Cindy Smith, who is the president of the San Carlos Lions Club.
It's my pleasure to present you with a $1,000 check for the emergency trailer system, the second one that you're putting together. And the Lions Club is a service group for the City of San Carlos, but it's also international. And we help with a lot of things like eyeglasses, scholarships, things like Katrina, Haiti. And there's people right on this spot that are willing to help. And we like to first of all work with our community. So here's a $1,000 check and I'm going to give it to you. Thank you.
And the second person, actually I want to mention that we raise this $1,000 at our annual tri-tip. So if you've got nothing to do in October and you're looking for a good meal, San Carlos Lions puts on a real good tri-tip. The second thing, the second check comes from San Carlos Together. And I'd like to introduce Tom Davids, although he doesn't need any introduction. Here he is.
Well, thank you very much. On behalf of San Carlos Together, it's our privilege to present another check for the supplies for the trailer. Now, San Carlos Together is a community-based nonprofit corporation with 501(c)(3) status. And our purpose is to support and encourage community organizations that wish to step up and do good things for the community. And so we have adopted several organizations under our umbrella. San Carlos Green is one. We have a group that's currently replanting and repotting the flower pots on Lowell Street. That's another project. We've teamed up with the Dog Owners Association who want to build a dog park in the community. And we're accepting funds on their behalf. And there are several other projects that we are looking at as well. So we're in the business to help the community and to help people who would like to contribute but who do not want to go through the incorporation or the tax-exempt status. We're here to take care of those things and encourage everyone to get involved in every way they can. So on behalf of our group, we have collected $1,500 from people and organizations who are interested in helping out the cause for a new trailer. And it's my pleasure to present the check to you, Mayor Mike. And thank you for, and to the community for all of the support you've given to us. Thank you.
We expect the second trailer any day now. It's been ordered and is en route. Weather's held it up from Oregon, but we expect it any time. And we'll have one trailer located at Fire Station 13 and the other one at Fire Station 16. So as soon as we get rolling, we'll be outfitting them with some of the necessary equipment for those trailers and just enhance the work and the commitment level from the CERT team. So we appreciate you guys and your commitment to helping with disaster preparedness and making the city safer by your commitment and involvement to that part of it. So thank you both very much.
So Mayor Mike, your last official duty is to get those checks to Ms. Bolin, our city clerk. You got two checks there, Christine? Okay. And I want to thank you very, very much for all your help. If you weren't here, we'd be another 20 minutes doing this stuff. So thank you. And now you're welcome to join us and keep up the meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Mike. Sure you don't want to do public comment, Mayor Royce? Okay, moving on to item six on our agenda, public comment. These are items where the public would like to speak on any items that are not on our formal agenda this evening. I have a few speaker cards. Let me start off with Matt Walsh. And again, if you could limit your comments to about two minutes, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Right here?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor and the council and other members of staff, this is in regard to the police outsourcing that's being considered now. Outsourcing often feels good now, but doesn't feel so great later. How about the San Carlos High School? Someone decided that our kids would be well-served by Redwood City, but they're not. And I'm likely to drop $50,000 per kid to avoid sending them to Sequoia. San Carlos will likely never have the cachet of Palo Alto for that decision. And you might say, well, this is different. This is a police force, right? Police are the police and the law is the law. I'm here to say that that's naive thinking. Every police department has its own culture and norms that affects every resident's life. Look at pre and post Rudy Giuliani, New York City for proof. What might be considered tolerable by one city is taken seriously in another. Well, I like our police. I like their norms. I don't want Redwood City norms, nor State of California norms. I want criminals to think San Carlos is a city to avoid. I don't want them to think, I don't think they think about that about Redwood City. And furthermore, I'm here to say I don't really trust Redwood City after hearing about the one phone call from Barbara Pierce that caused them to shut down very successful DUI driver's license checkpoint last year amidst cheers of criminals and residents. That's bending the law for politics and that's the beginning of the end for a safe and objective community. And if that weren't enough, there are major fiscal risks when you eliminate a core competency. Sure, we might get attractive bids now, but what happens when we're a few years in? How can we defend ourselves against rate hikes when the recourse would be re-establishing a police department that we would have no way of even considering re-establishing? And if you guys are having this much trouble standing up against Sacramento as they take our tax dollars away, how are you going to stand up against the California police when they want to insist on changes? And say even we have sustainable long-term savings. In a way, I look at this like a mortgage. I mean, I could sell my house and rent for less, but what would they do with that money? Are you going to use it wisely? Would you really save it? So I guess for all these reasons, I strongly advocate retaining our police force. And if nothing else, I think the situation demands at least a public vote before a decision is made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next two speakers, we have Ken Castle and Pat Bell.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Nice to see new talent on the council. Maybe this should be a regular thing. I'm also here to speak about the police department. I'm sorry that Commander Reed has left because I was going to say a few words on his behalf. I had the pleasure of working with John Reed for over a year now. And when we started our Neighborhood Watch in White Oaks, he was our first contact. And I have to say that he is really indicative of the level of quality, professionalism, and the receptiveness to community outreach. And had it not been for John Reed, I don't think we would have been able to get up and going with Neighborhood Watch the way we have. He was absolutely supportive through the whole early stages of our organization. And frankly, we have an absolutely terrific relationship with the police department. Just this morning, I was making some comments about speeding problems that we were having in the neighborhood. And about an hour later, up went a speed trailer on Cedar. And so this is the kind of close cooperation that we like to have. I think it is what we are able to get from a local police department. And I am sorry to see Commander Reed leave after all these years with the City of San Carlos. I hope that we can work to retain the talent and the leadership that we have in our police department because really it has done, it's served this community very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pat Bell?
Pat Bell, San Carlos. I want to say that was especially good group of presentations tonight, very deserving. I could have gotten up and spoken about several of them. And I want to second what's just been said about police. But what I really want to talk about tonight is how offended I am to hear the rudeness and the insults directed at our fire chief, who has built this department up from a shambles to a wonderful department that until recently had terrific morale and worked so well together and did such a terrific job. And Doug Frye is responsible for that. Matt and Bob helped to save the department and put it back on its feet financially and hire Doug. But Doug is the one who has really made it what it was until recently. Please don't tell me that I haven't heard what I've heard. I have. And it's very offensive to hear from council members and staff insults, outright insults to our fire chief who's done such a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on any items not on the agenda tonight? Let's move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of council, staff, or public request that specific items be removed for separate action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve consent calendars, items 7A through E.
Second. Second. Do you have first and second? Recall.
Councilmember Maun?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
Reports to council, up to item eight on our agenda. We have a quarterly report from the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. Chief Frye?
[inaudible].
Okay. Well, why don't you come up and we'll see if there are any? Thank you. Thank you for your report and the package here. Any questions, comments on the report?
I just had a quick question, Chief. Again, because I'm a little bit out of the loop and I apologize. I should have been asking the other council members this and I apologize for taking your time. But what is the, what do you feel the tentative time will be to approve the budget?
Well, I'm hoping.
That's sort of a bad spot. I didn't really, that's really a tough question because I know you don't get a vote.
Well, I'm looking to get some sort of consensus Wednesday night to bring it back to the both parent agencies later in the month.
I guess I missed asked the question. I apologize. It has to be approved by June 30th. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. That's sort of what I was going for, but thanks.
Chief, there was an exercise, and I don't know if anyone's watching who lives up there, but my wife called me quite alarmed when she saw firefighters on the hill in the open space. I was wondering, just so you could report what there was.
That was the wildfire awareness presentation made by CalFire last week on, I think that was Thursday. They had a number of, actually all of our local agencies, our agency, Redwood City, Woodside, and CalFire were all up in the Pogus Ridge open space behind Pressview up in there. And they had been kind of coordinating it during the entire week throughout the state. And that was San Mateo County's place to make that announcement of some of the things that are in place through the state, the agreements that the local government has with the state and the county for fire services and for protection and the, kind of the handshake that we have to make sure that we're covering the appropriate areas for immediate response for any wildland fires.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one question. That's regarding, there's been a number of fires in the area, house fires, one in, I think it's in Incorporated Menlo Park, but in Menlo Park nonetheless. And I'm just curious if Mr. Pelosi's been used on any of these for investigations?
He has not. The fire marshal is off. He had surgery last week for a hernia and he's going to be out for a couple more weeks. So, I'm kind of filling in on those spots on it as needed. Those agencies that have had those fires do have their own investigators currently. So, I did help out Redwood City a couple of weeks ago, but for the most part, Menlo has their own investigators for fires down in that area.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Okay. Moving on to item nine, new business. We have five items. In case you don't have an agenda, the first will be talking about work plans from our commissions. We have high-speed rail letters. Second, some landscaping for the Grand Boulevard, El Camino. Fourth is Economic Development Advisory Commission on Restaurants. And last, we're talking about filling our commission membership. Those are the five items. First off, 9A is consideration of 2010 work plans, 2010/11 work plans for city commission and boards. Mr. Moore, a short report first?
Thank you, Mayor Royce. Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager. As council knows, for the last three years now, we've had an annual program of commission work plans. This is a program where each commission provides the council with the five or more items, the key items that they propose for the upcoming fiscal year. This is timed to coincide with your budget process. And also, each commission is tasked to give you an update on how they did in the prior years' work plan items. This gives the opportunity, the council, to hear what's coming in the year ahead for each of your commissions and also to provide any feedback to the commissioners and to make any suggested modifications you might have. Tonight, at the suggestion of Mayor Royce, we're changing the format a little bit. We've asked each of the commissions to come forward and to highlight their work plans and all, I think, but one of the commissions was able to do that. And so, we're going to have a series of slides and I'll ask each of the chair or vice chairs from these commissions to come up. So, to start off, we'll ask Steve Divney, the vice chair of the Planning Commission, to talk a little bit about Planning Commission's objectives.
Good evening, Mayor Royce, members of the city council, city clerk. I think you'll see that we have a mix of the usual, which is ongoing, like the advisory to the council, and some site-specific ones, as well as one that's dedicated to the implementation of the general plan. So, the first one, advisory, that hasn't changed much. That really is dependent on the workload as far as apps coming in, et cetera. Zoning code update, that's implementation associated with Phase 1 of our general plan, which was just recently passed. So, we've identified a outside contractor that will be coming, I think, before your next city council meeting for approval of that contract. We're currently finishing out negotiations with that. We have two members who have helped out in that process, Commissioner San Filippo and Commissioner Clapper. We're working with staff on that one. The next one, we could call this review of use of 445, city-owned parcel, AKA In-N-Out Burger. I think we're going to have the conditional use permit and staff report coming at the end of June. I believe it's 21st, our second meeting in June. So, hopefully, we'll get that pushed through one way or another and get it up the chain. I know they're pushing pretty hard for that. Transit Village, we heard their first round on the EIR a couple of months back. They've had comments and implemented them. So, we hope to get some recommendation as far as the certification of their environmental impact report here in the very near future. And Wheeler Plaza, I think you guys were in discussion regarding extending some of the contractual negotiations there. So, we'll be hearing that, I'm sure, within the next six to 12 months, somewhere along the line, with respect to the EIR and any design issues we need to address. And the last one's one of those ongoing ones, municipal code updates. We do that throughout the year based on staff recommendations or on our own accord as we see issues arise during the year. And if you have any specific questions or comments that you'd like to pass back to the commission, I'd be happy to take them.
Any comments, Mr. Grokot?
What I have is regards Design Review Committee for residential projects because we've talked about that being a budget item and eliminating the Design Review Committee. And I think before we do that, or if we're thinking of doing that, we should hear from the Planning Commission what your opinion is on that issue. Or, you know, you might look at what are some alternatives to having the Design Review Committee? Is it even necessary? Or if it is necessary, maybe there's another way to do it that would cost less money, et cetera.
Okay. I'm pretty sure we'd be happy to take a look at that with staff if there's some specific agenda item that we can put on a future meeting. Definitely can do that, no problem.
Any other comments?
Mr. Divney, just, I appreciate the report and I love this format, Mr. Mayor. But I'm curious, is there something that we could do from the council level to help make Planning Commission more efficient? I'm not certain what feedback you're getting from people who are coming before you about how hearings are moving or things like that. What is something that we should look at to help make Planning Commission more efficient?
I think we have, we've done what we can do. I think staff has, I've done applications on the other side of the counter throughout the country. And seeing our model, the way it works, is quite efficient because a client, a client, I should say, an applicant, when he or she comes to the counter, is not just deemed complete on their application. They're actually guided through the process. There's predictability in the process. And I think that goes a long way towards the efficiency. There are a number of other cities on the peninsula where they don't have that predictability. And it gets very political. Developers are very hesitant to even discuss projects. So, I think, I think we have a pretty good setup here.
Great. Thank you.
I have one item, and this is my own personal item. So, usually, I try to listen to public and get ideas from everybody else, but this is just driven totally by me. It's when you drive down the freeway, 101, and we kind of have an attractive frontage and yet not attractive. There are the Best Buys and the Fly Fishing Shop and REI and, you know, people, there's, what, 750,000 cars, I think, go up and down 101? Whatever, there's lots. And then we also have the back end of businesses that kind of treat it like their storage. It's stuff is, you know, scrap metal and there's weeds. There's a Bell Plumbing Company that now has a van on top of a container sitting there to me, which is unacceptable from just an appearance point of view. There are, so there are kind of maintenance, appearance-type things. There are containers that are taking up parking behind, like Best Buy and so forth. There's signage that I think is beyond our ordinances where people slap vinyl signs up on the freeway fencing at certain times. And so, I just kind of judge, is this other council and the commission, again, it's, I'm not trying to create more work, but not making a project out of it, but when there are, we are reviewing businesses and conditional use permits. I think there is definitely opportunity for aesthetic improvements and more enforcement to our ordinances regarding signage and containers and so forth along that frontage area that I have observed. I don't know, any strong reaction?
Well, through the chair, as good as Mr. Divney does his job, I mean, I assume you're talking to staff because Mr. Divney has nothing to do with any of that.
Well, but planning actually creates.
Yeah, but it's staff. If we have issues, we've got to go through, in my opinion, we've got to go through staff.
I think, yeah, I was going to say, there are enforcement issues in there. There are some inherent frame-up issues regarding what we can and can't enforce. And I defer to the city council, I mean, city council with an S on that one. The city attorney's quite familiar with that. But maybe there is a mechanism whereby, and I'm not advocating this, but at least we address it if it is an issue, that some of those properties are IDed and we take a look at that, like you said, through some of the processes. Or maybe if there's just some inherent repeat offenders, we address those through revocation if there's a CUP or some other process. But again, it's more towards what council member Grisilli said, it's an enforcement issue.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Next, Brian?
Next up, we have the Economic Development Advisory Commission and Chair Gary Wissinger.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having us tonight, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, at a high level, the Economic Development Advisory Commission is focused on helping city staff and less directly helping the council grow the economy of San Carlos, economy used in a broader sense, not just numbers, not just revenue, but improve the quality of life. Certainly, the numbers are important to us as well. And it's, I think, near and dear to all of our hearts, but certainly, I think, should be to everyone in San Carlos because it's the best way that we can address our fiscal challenges. Certainly, cutting or growing and growing our tax revenues is a better alternative than cutting or raising taxes on our current residents. So, the priorities that we're focused on to deliver on that, the first, the standing item, advisory body to all of you. Second, and as Vice Chair Divney talked about, with the general plan update, there are, there's an opportunity to update the zoning code. We'll be working with them to do that, working with a consultant. And certainly, from our perspective, focusing on the business aspects of that and making sure the code encourages and enables the best uses of the land that we've got. Third, Wheeler Plaza, speaking of the land that we've got, certainly one of the best pieces of property we have in the city of San Carlos that's available. So, we will continue to work with city staff to advise on the best use there and look at the mix of retail, commercial, residential, office space, parking, et cetera. Fourth, I think, you know, one of the most exciting things that we're doing right now, the marketing initiative. We all know that San Carlos is a very, you know, it's a wonderful place to live, to shop, to dine, to buy, to locate a business. Problem is that many of the people in the region, many people even in Belmont and Redwood City don't know that. We're a somewhat hidden gem. And I think we think we're better known than we are. So, there's a huge opportunity for us in getting the word out about the strengths of San Carlos and what it has to offer, things like a quaint downtown and strength in restaurants and strength in the home and building goods, supply industries and sporting goods industries, et cetera. So, this marketing strategy is going to help us do exactly that, bring more dollars into San Carlos and bring more businesses into San Carlos. So, we've contracted, we've advised and city staff has contracted with a national agency who specializes in this, and they're in the process of putting together that strategy right now. The sales tax leakage and fiscal analysis, so two pieces of analysis that we're going to consult city staff on in the coming year. The sales tax leakage really looks at what are the unmet needs of our own residents? And in terms of where are they spending sales tax dollars outside of the city of San Carlos? Where are we losing our own residents' dollars to neighboring cities because we're not providing the services? Certainly, if we can convince anybody to spend and shop in San Carlos, it should be our own residents. And let's be clear on where we're losing those dollars and address that. And then the fiscal analysis of land use, we often talk about, you know, what is the best economic use of a certain area of land? One that's near and dear to my heart is the 101 Industrial Corridor. And I believe that business is often about location, location, location. That is an incredible location with hundreds of thousands of potential shoppers driving by every single day. You know, are we getting maximum use out of that land? And so, not just for this area, for the city as a whole, or at least the commercial areas, this analysis will look at the fiscal return by land, by land use, residential, commercial, office, manufacturing, et cetera, and geography, see how we're doing and see where there are opportunities for us to improve. And then that will inform the future city staff activities in targeting those areas. Last one on this slide, the, certainly a key part of economic development is retaining our existing high-quality businesses and recruiting more. And so, we'll act as an advisory body to city staff and Chamber and the Economic Development Partnership in creating the best business recruitment package and business retention strategy. Slide two. We're working double hard in EDAC, so we have two slides. We'll use that as an opportunity to say that I think Mark Swickie and staff do an amazing amount, as you can see here. You know, it's aggressive and optimistic, but we have a lot of opportunity and we had a lot of items on the plan last year and accomplished the great, great majority of them. So, you know, Mark and team in partnership with the Chamber and the Economic Development Partnership do a great job. So, communication plan, this is going to build off of the marketing strategy, but it's really about enlisting the whole community in helping improve the economy. You know, one of the best, you know, probably our two biggest assets we have in San Carlos are our land and our people. And so, we have strategies to make sure we're taking full advantage of both of those assets. And this is getting the community to understand the economic challenge we have, the economic opportunity we have, and getting their help, getting their help by shopping more in San Carlos, getting their help by recommending San Carlos businesses more, getting their help by serving, on volunteering, on various task forces and initiatives. And that can be residents, but it can also be business owners within San Carlos. So, that'll include most likely some kind of email or electronic newsletter, you know, website, et cetera, updated on a monthly or quarterly basis, kind of like today in San Carlos, but focused on economic development to really get them to understand the opportunities there. Project review criteria is something that came out of EDAC and specifically Commissioner Mark Green. You know, we're frequently assessing various projects that come through and certainly Planning Commission's doing the same, city staff is doing the same, and at times, city council is doing the same. We want to make sure that we're assessing different projects on a consistent basis, on a standardized basis, that we're applying best practices, and that we're also looking holistically about economic development. We're not just looking at the numbers or the short-term benefit and cost. We're thinking long-term. We're thinking about the impacts on quality of life, et cetera. And so, this is an internal effort to build up those criteria. We'll use it within EDAC once we have it and then certainly make it available to city staff, Planning Commission, city council, or anyone who gets benefit out of it. It's key, you know, in anything we do to track how we're doing, to track the results. It's especially hard in economic development because much of the outcome of our economy is driven by macroeconomic, you know, national, if not global, effects. economy is driven by macroeconomic, you know, national, if not global, effects, certainly regional effects, and the, uh, actions of individual businesses, the Chamber, et cetera. Um, so, uh, we've been working for a little while and we, we're going to continue working on identifying, you know, what are the, the right quantitative goals to, uh, measure, um, right, right quantitative goals for economic development and, and how do we measure our progress towards that to make sure we're doing the right things and, and it's actually working? And if not, we see that, we see that and we, we take action. All right, we're almost there. Um, the landmark hotel opportunity has been a, a top priority for EDAC and for city council for, for years. Uh, recently, um, city staff hasn't been able to make traction with developers because of, you know, certainly because of the economy, a lower demand, um, for, for that kind of development as well as difficulty getting funding. Um, we wants to, uh, and while it's happening, some of that land is sitting, you know, relatively unused. Uh, we wanted to revisit, uh, the, the, uh, plan around that and, um, revisit the, the idea around a, a four-star hotel, revisit the, the plan for that landmark site at, uh, Industrial and Holly, and, um, make sure that, that, you know, this is indeed the right use. Um, and, you know, if we, assuming we validate it, that, that we'll educate, um, you know, the thinking around that and can share that with developers, or it may give us ideas on better uses and things that we can act on more quickly than, than building a hotel. Very, very much fans of building a hotel, we just, you know, something's better than, than, uh, nothing. And, uh, then finally, um, uh, we have a three-year plan, economic development plan. In fact, we just, uh, you just approved, uh, the second, uh, three-year plan. Uh, we originally did it back in 2007 through 2010. We have a new one running from 2010 to 2013, and we update that on an annual, annual basis, look at, um, what we've done, what's worked, what hasn't, and what's changed in the economy, and then, uh, update the plan accordingly. So certainly we'll do that, uh, about a year from now. So those are our priorities. Any questions or, or, uh, comments, feedback?
Questions?
I do have a few. Um, I was glad to hear you saying, I think I heard that right, on item 10, that you're possibly looking at other uses for the landmark site. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And just a, you know, a comment on that, I think what, what might remain in that bullet is still a landmark site, but what are other, what are other uses that might fit in a landmark site, correct?
Right. I mean, Plan A continues to be, uh, you know, the four-star hotel. We think there's a huge opportunity there on, on many dimensions. But again, if, you know, we, we want to see, um, you know, if, if that's just not feasible, if it's not going to work out, let's not sit on that land for 10 or 20 years waiting for a developer, a hotel developer to come along.
Right, okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that. Two other comments, um, is, or questions, are you looking at anything, uh, for what appears to be an emerging business? And that is, uh, you know, on the east side, I know we've got undisputed boxing gym, we've got, I can't think of the names of the other ones, and sorry, guys, uh, I don't mean to give a free advertisement for someone, but, but there, there are those kind of things. And in Belmont, you know, there's the place on the El Camino with the climbing wall. It, it seems like those kind of uses are, are coming in. Are we looking at anything, uh, to either encourage that kind of, uh, growth or, on the flip side, I, I don't think they necessarily fit with the, uh, you know, initially when they come in, they don't, they don't necessarily fit with the use, but are we looking at anything that would maybe make them fit with the use or at least streamline the process so that businesses that want to do that kind of thing are not discouraged?
Yeah. Uh, I can talk at a, you know, at a broader level, uh, in terms of some of the, the specifics. You know, I defer to, to Mark Swickie or, you know, we can certainly, um, respond later. Um, we have identified, uh, sporting goods as a strength. You know, with REI and the cluster of businesses that is immediately around REI and then expanding, um, yes, we, we have a relative strength in sporting goods and, and we wants to, we need to leverage our strengths, we need to expand our strengths. And, um, so that is certainly part of the marketing strategy of getting the word out that, that, you know, we have this cluster of, of a variety of types of, of, uh, recreation businesses. Uh, as part of our, um, outreach, uh, lunches that the Economic Development Partnership does, segment by segment, uh, one of the first segments we identified because of that strength was the, uh, the recreational and sporting good, uh, group, and, and we got a group of them, invited all of them, got a group of them together, uh, for lunch one day and, and shared what was going on, uh, within economic development in the city and, and got their feedback on what we can do more, what we can do with them to grow their segment. So it's definitely identified as, as an opportunity, it's a priority. Um, uh, you know, I think one of the, uh, one of, one thing that we need to work through is the, uh, the economic, um, benefit of some of those, those businesses. If they're more service businesses, you know, it doesn't have as direct of a economic benefit, but again, we take the, the holistic view. Um, I'll also say that, that in our research, uh, one of the things, one of the gaps that's been identified in San Carlos is, uh, good activities for, uh, for youth, especially kind of teenage youth, and some of these, these, uh, gyms can provide exactly that. So that makes it more appealing for us as well. Um, so again, you know, yes, we believe it's an opportunity, yes, it's a priority. You know, we've done some things to, to reach out to them, you know, I, I think there's probably more there, uh, but some of that will come as a result or as part of the marketing strategy.
Okay. And then, uh, my last comment is, if it's, I, I think under item six, and I, I had mentioned this one time before, but, uh, since you're here, I'll mention it again. And that is, uh, to work on what I would call an exit, uh, interview. We've had two major companies leave San Carlos. Do we know why? Tesla Motors and Nectar. And I think it's probably not too late to work on some kind of exit interview, uh, come up with that and then still reach out to these companies and just say, "Look, we're interested in knowing why you left San Carlos. We want to know what our strengths and weaknesses are." And, you know, even was there anything possibly that we could have done to keep you here? And if not, that's fine, but it, it at least helps us to, uh, know what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong, and, uh, if there's anything that we can do, uh, to change the mind of a company like that, that, that's thinking about leaving, we, we ought to be aware of it.
Absolutely. And, um, I think it's a great, great, uh, great point. We, um, did discuss that in both cases and, and others, uh, in, in EDAC. Um, I'm not sure if, if city staff spoke to them, uh, I won't speak to, speak for them, but, um, the feeling was, within, in the Tesla case, they were looking for a, you know, relative to us, a massive amount of, of manufacturing space, um, that the city of San Carlos just can't produce right now. Uh, and Nectar got a, you know, sweetheart deal within the biotech development area within the city, um, that, again, you know, just, you know, we, we, we can't compete with and the owner of that land couldn't compete with. Um, we, you know, the flip side of it was, you know, we feel it's, it's an advantage and strength that we ever got innovative businesses like that. And so we want to make sure that comes through in the marketing strategy as well and that we get more businesses like them. Maybe to some extent, we're an innovative business incubator, where, you know, they start here and they grow, and at some point, you know, we, we, we push them out the door and they, they move on to another, another, uh, larger city. We don't want to encourage that necessarily, but, but, you know, that, there's a role for, for that kind of thing. Um, so, uh, you know, in those cases, don't know if we could have, could have changed it, but, you know, we do see the opportunity there, and I think doing exit interviews with, with selected businesses is, is a great idea.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, there's one more thing that came to mind.
Please.
Um, when we were doing the, uh, general plan, something that I kept commenting on, and it, it got in there, uh, in, in, you know, I would call it a light sort of fashion, um, wasn't emphasized too much, in other words, but, uh, that is higher education. And as part of the economic development plan, might that be something that we look at? Would that benefit us? You know, we don't have, for instance, like Belmont has, or Menlo Park, you know, Menlo Park's got Menlo College, Belmont has, uh, Notre Dame, uh, we have nothing.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we don't have a high school, we don't have higher education. Might that help us in our economic development? And you talked about whole, you know, wholesome living and quality of life, uh, perhaps that's something that, that EDAC could look at.
Absolutely. I, we, we can certainly take it into, uh, under consideration, and, and we actually, you know, relative to, to priority number one advisory body, uh, I personally would love more, you know, questions, uh, coming from, from city council saying, "Can you guys look at this, provide an, an opinion on that?" Um, so, you know, we're very happy to look at it. It hasn't come up in, in the discussions, as I remember. Um, I think, uh, you know, certainly there's some opportunities there, especially if it's, if it's specialized higher education, um, around technology, for example. Um, that could play well to, to the innovation that we have and that we're trying to emphasize. You know, an obvious challenge around land, uh, Menlo College and, and Notre Dame have, you know, land that, that is not available in San Carlos, but, um, that doesn't mean that, that a more specialized and smaller, at least geographically, uh, geographic, you know, uh, kind of institution, you know, couldn't, couldn't work. Um, certainly I think it's worth looking at.
And for example, there, there is a, a specialized, uh, you might call it higher education element that we do have, and that's the, the trade school.
Right.
Uh, for electricians, it's out there on the east side.
And, and again, builds right off of our, our strength in, uh, building and, uh, you know, building trades and, and supplies. And it's that kind of thing that, you know, we want to focus energy on a, a few different themes, messages, strengths, and, and build those up so that, you know, San Carlos gets known as, you know, the place for, you know, great shopping and, you know, quaint shopping and great dining, the place to go if you're buying anything for your house, uh, or you want, you know, training in that, the place to go for sporting goods and recreation services. You know, if we get a few of those things and we really build those up, it's going to be much better than, than trying to, uh, improve things across the board.
Thank you.
Anything else? Questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next, uh, transportation circulation.
Yes, Margaret Pye.
Margaret. Welcome, Margaret. Hi.
We limited ourselves to nine bullet points for our work plan for this year, and I'll just, uh, go through them very briefly. Um, advise the city council, as, as all the commissions do. Um, the bicycle transportation plan is something that we just updated very recently. We had a subcommittee of the, of our commission, um, work on that, and they've got some real innovative ideas, and, uh, I think that the, having a, a bicycle transportation plan is going to make us competitive for grant funding for some of our ideas in the future. Uh, school route plans, we're very, uh, interested in safe routes to schools. We've been trying to encourage students to walk and bike to school, um, thus reducing motorized vehicles, queuing up at all the schools, dropping kids off. Um, again, there's lots of opportunities for programs and, um, lots of people involved in this with the schools. The police department has expressed support for this as well. Um, the next one is to review traffic reports for proposed developments. Um, I think that would be such as the In-N-Out Burger. Um, we're going to be discussing that in our June meeting, looking at the traffic reports for that, which I haven't seen yet, but it'll be very interesting to see what that, what the results of that is going to be. Uh, capital project design, um, such things as bikeway improvements on Old County Road. Um, we already have grant money, um, issued for that, so that, that's, uh, in a sense, paid for. We just have to work on the details. Um, and also that, um, includes, uh, improvements to the crosswalk at Belmont and El Camino, which is by the Walgreens store. Um, there's a bus stop on the east side of El Camino there, but very inconvenient and dangerous-looking crosswalk situations. So, uh, we also have some grant money issued already to fund that. Uh, task six is for, um, I think I lumped two together, uh, sorry about that. The proposed developments was In-N-Out, capital improvement was Old County Road, okay. Holly Street 101, we worked so hard on that last year, and we got through the first step of it, and now the Mark Thomas Company is working on the project study report. So we haven't discussed that too much the last couple of meetings, but we know that something's coming in this upcoming year, uh, for more detailed, um, recommendations on how to implement the changes that are going to be made around 101 and Holly. Uh, task seven is prioritizing striping and pavement markings. Our esteemed public works director is very good at bringing us, um, the, the locations that need changes like that and giving us very thoughtful, uh, staff reports on how we should address them. So we, we rely very heavily on him, and all of us really appreciate his work. Uh, number eight is pedestrian, uh, safety assessment, and I don't know, that just happened in the last week or so, and I wasn't involved in that, but, uh, public director, public works director, Wile, was able to get a free pedestrian safety survey that is worth approximately $25,000. And somebody came and gave, um, a detailed inspection of two different locations in San Carlos that will be brought before the commission in the near future, um, to see if we can actually implement some of the suggestions that we got through this very valuable study. And finally, it looks like there are some revisions needed to the city's truck ordinance. Um, I understand that was driven by the police department, um, saying that they need the ordinance to be written in a way that makes it easier to enforce. So, uh, that'll be coming before us, before it comes to you, so that's something that we're looking forward to working on this upcoming year as well.
Great. Thank you. Questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have.
Mr. Pye?
Just one thing to bring up, and I don't know if this is the proper time, maybe this should go through staff, but just to mention, um, you know, I see that your, the commission's been working with, uh, safe routes to schools and stuff like that. It still begs to be noted that at this point in our, in San Carlos, there is no transportation for children, um, at all. We used to have a busing system in San Carlos, then we had Scoot, and, and we have nothing now. And as someone who attended these schools, I, I walked a lot, but most of the time I took the bus, and the majority of my schoolmates did back then. And it was about half the kids who went to school then that there are now. Terre Linda wasn't open, Central was, no one was at capacity, and now all these schools are at capacities, and we have another school that reopened. Um, so I think that's something maybe that transportation and circulation could look at as, just another attempt to maybe see if we can find a model that would work in this town where we can provide transportation for school-aged children and for our seniors as well. Um, which would lead to also to economic development, to get our seniors who are in their homes downtown so they can spend their money. Um, I just, I think we have too large of a town and too geographically diverse of a town to not have some sort of transportation east to west. Um, our only transportation gets you out of town. So I just think that maybe it, this should go through staff or maybe, maybe something I think we need to make another go at it at some point.
Mr. Pye?
Well, I'll feed on that point and, and have a specific request. Uh, Sam Trans, so I said on the Sam Trans board, we're going to be doing some significant overhauling of that budget, but one of the things that would be very helpful for me is to get from this commission some sort of recommendations for either changes to bus routes, uh, what are critical routes to maintain for San Carlos residents? And also, as we're starting to look at more regional shuttles, it may be interesting to see where a regional shuttle program could work. So, uh, those are some things that, uh, would really help me in terms of being able to, uh, move things forward at Sam Trans, again, given a tough bit, budget situation, but it would be great to know, especially from, from this commission's standpoint, what are critical pieces and, and what should we try to preserve.
Great. Mr. Pye?
The only comment I have is, uh, when I look at your list, uh, I, I know, you know, funding is limited and, and so forth, but, uh, I, I think probably most of the community would, would agree with this also, is just focusing on that safe route to school plan because we've had, we, we know we've had the schools talk to us about that, and there are some places that are just really wanting. And the thing I, the one I think of is San Carlos Avenue, because we've got three schools, uh, three, I should say, three school sites, because some of them have multiple schools there. Um, all along San Carlos Avenue from, you know, Arundel, uh, to Terre Linda, and then I would include Carlmont. And Carlmont's a mess in the morning. You try to go anywhere at eight, eight o'clock, and, uh, if you're going that direction, you might as well stay home. And, uh, I think part of, part of the problem there is that San Carlos Avenue is so unsafe for, for bicyclists or, uh, or people walking. It, you know, it's, it's not if you're an adult, if you're like a, a seasoned commuter like you are, I don't, or, you know, when I ride a bike on San Carlos Avenue, I don't mind it, but, uh, if, if, you know, when I go with my seven-year-old son on the trailer bike even from downtown just to Arundel, it's, it's a hairy, you know, adventure.
It is daunting.
Yeah. And, and we just, you know, I think if nothing else, let's, let's put the plan together, if we can, and, uh, have it so that when we get the funding, we know what we're doing. One of the things I think of, for instance, chairing the, the Countywide BPAC, we've watched Half Moon Bay work on their trail, because they have, they have a similar situation, really. They have a lot of workers and a lot of kids, uh, trying to use Highway One as their, their route to school or work, and they have a, a large population that, that ride bicycles, adults that ride bicycles, that work in the ag business. Um, and it's one thing to, to go along Highway One when it's a sunny day, but imagine doing that when it's foggy. And so that's why they've put in a, uh, they've been working on a trail system that follows just alongside Highway One, but it's far enough away that it's safe. And they've come to BPAC year after year after year. I, I think ever since, uh, Tom gave up his seat and asked me to, to be on BPAC, Half Moon Bay's been applying for funds, and mile by mile by mile, we've approved it because they broke it down into bite-sized pieces that we could afford and it wouldn't wipe out, you know, all the grant funding we had. And I think, so I, so I just think having some kind of plan together and then go after kind of plan together and then go after the funding little by little may, may be the way to do it. I don't know. But it's, when I look at that, safe routes to school, we've been working on that, thinking about it at least for years, and yet we haven't, I don't feel like, unfortunately, made too much progress in that area. So.
Yeah.
I know that's daunting, Margaret, but.
No, we continue to work on that.
Yeah.
We're trying to establish a good relationship with the school district.
Thanks for what you do.
Mr. Griselli?
The only comment I had was, when you mentioned the truck ordinance, and I'm sure you're going to be doing it, it's, it's sort of, to me, multifaceted relative to possibly Economic Development Advisory Council or the Chamber of Commerce, obviously, as well as the police. I mean, I'm sure you're aware of it, but it's got to be a sort of a multi, in my mind, a multi thing, because you can certainly make an ordinance about not having a truck go a certain place for a certain reason, and then possibly economically, it might be a complete wipeout. So there's, it's going to have to be obviously some compromise all the way around on that. And I'm sure you're aware of it, I just wanted to make sure that we involve all the other agencies that need to be involved in that.
Yeah, it's not going to be as simple as just re.
No. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Great. Anything else?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. I believe now we have Park and Rec. I see Ann Iverson in the audience.
Iverson, Vice Chair, yes.
Great, welcome. And there are more flowers as we speak in that spot today.
Burton Park.
With all that water, it's beautiful.
So, good evening, Mayor Carlson, I mean, Mayor Royce and City Council. I, we have a little bit of a shorter list, which is less daunting, and it should take me only a couple of minutes. We have been working with the Trails Committee on, you know, just hearing a lot of the plans they have in place. They're very organized. I know you've heard some presentations from Trails, so are pretty aware with, about what they're doing. And I think the first thing on our list is to help them and support them in getting the access to Pulgas Ridge off of Los Vientos Way. And there's, of course, an environmental impact report or some sort of environmental report that's necessary for that and funding involved. Number two, environmental impact. We are continually reviewing the climate action plan and general plan to see what kinds of things we can put into place and get moving. This last year, we worked on the energy efficiency stimulus funding, which is providing about $142,000 for energy efficiency upgrades, mostly in lighting. And we're hoping to get an energy efficiency audit as well in the HVAC area, look at things like green purchasing procedures, water efficiency, and urban tree canopy. See what we'll be working on this year. Number three, funding strategies. We have assigned a liaison with the Park and Rec Foundation, which hadn't been in place before, to see what kind of synergies we can make and, you know, what ideas we can come up with to maximize any kind of fundraising and just so that we're all on the same page as well, working forward on, on new projects. Dog park. There's been a huge ground swell from the community for a dog park, all coming from one of our local veterinaries in town. And that has turned into the San Carlos Dog Owners Association, which is now a part of San Carlos Together. And they've identified another number of plots, did a really careful study of a lot of different places where they might possibly put a dog park, and they've identified Vista Park. And they're now having a landscape architect who's donating his time to draw the plans for the park, and they're going to start fundraising at hometown days. So we'll continue to work with them as well. And then finally, we're, we continue to look at Park and Rec facilities to see how we can optimize the facilities and, you know, with what recreation needs the city has so that we're not closing down facilities when, when there's a need, and also maximizing any kind of revenue stream that we can have from the certain facilities. We took a look at the schools, but apparently there's a little bit of competition with the schools. So the schools are now trying to, you know, pull in recreation and, you know, day schools and things like that as well in their facilities to raise money. So trying to keep an eye on that as well.
Questions? Start from this side. Mr. Grocott?
I have one item that I don't see it up there, but I know there's some work going on, and that is volunteer opportunities. Because I know Mr. David's group has talked about working with the Parks and Rec Foundation, or Parks and Rec Department on volunteering, you know, providing volunteers. And I think that there ought to be some effort by the city to synchronize those efforts and, and, you know, see what we can do there. And, you know, there probably are opportunities for, you know, pick a park and let's go weeding on a Saturday or something like that. Those things are probably there.
Yeah, we do that.
Right?
Correct.
And then the, the other item that comes to mind is, I went to a CCAG retreat recently, and the executive director of CCAG was asking the council members if there was any other area that CCAG might venture into in the future. And we, you know, threw out a couple of ideas, and something that just came to mind now is the idea of parks and recreation. Because the way, I had mentioned earlier that I'm the Chair of BPAC, and what, what happens with CCAG is, you know, they get, they, they act as an association to bring in grant money from federal and state sources, and then they do projects, and you, you do a project application to receive, you know, grant money that's been put in this poll.
Okay.
And it seems like that model perhaps could work with Parks and Rec, and I don't know if that's something that you guys would want to, you know, float and take a look at and float by CCAG. It might be, there might be an opportunity there. Because what made me think of it is when you're talking about tree canopies and some of these other things, you know, when it comes to buying things, if you can buy things, you know, with a consortium of buyers, you know, brought together, sometimes you get a better deal. And the same thing applies when you go for grant funding. That's why CCAG does it that way, because as a larger organization, you can sometimes pull in funds and afford the grant rider that you can't do individually.
Right.
Griselli?
No, thank you, Ann.
Anna?
Ms. Iverson, one request. I've gotten a couple of, more than a few emails over the last few years for folks who are concerned about trees and the tree canopy and pushing for the notion of Tree City USA status.
Yes.
I would like to put as a request if the feasibility of that could be examined. I know that we are doing some cutbacks, but there may be an opportunity for us to get creative to see if that is a designation we could get, and if we could do some more programs to increase tree covers.
Great. Actually, San Carlos Green has already got the foundation for Tree City status, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Perfect. Thank you.
One thought I have is regarding the funding and working with the foundation. I'm not sure this is the best way, but I do see it happening a lot. A lot of times, foundations or nonprofits first find it, you know, kind of create what their need is, their capital need. And I think we did that with our Burden Park, our playground. We said, this is a need. We costed it out, and then we had a fundraiser that actually was very successful in having that done. You know, a church I'm involved with just went through a capital program. They said, hey, we need a roof and windows for the school and all this other stuff, and then they had a capital program. So usually, you kind of create small projects, short-term ones, and long-term major capital projects and kind of having a listing. So then, and then you come up with a plan on fundraising, how you're going to fund the little ones and the big ones and things like that. So are, do we, and it's probably more a question of, but I know we work with the foundation. Have we articulated kind of that a priority list on what would be the three or four things that we would do if we had money? And again, there may be different levels of priority, different sizes of programs and so forth. But when, when we think about, you know, volunteer work, time is one hand, but I like that idea, but also the pocketbook things where, you know, people feel good about giving to a specific program. Have they articulated a formal listing for the city on something like that, or should they, I guess?
Well, I think staff probably has that sort of list. And we have, we're not too involved with that at this point, but it's certainly a possibility that we could take a look at that list and work with the foundation on whatever some of, what they think is appropriate.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking, is just work with them. Again, I'm not sure what, what the way to do it is, but, but a little bit of dreaming, sometimes dreams come true, I guess.
Yeah.
Great. Anything else?
Through the chair, on that point, with our capital improvement program that we will bring back to the city council, we do discuss both the funded as well as the unfunded projects. And this year, if we're able to put some money into the infrastructure fund, as is the plan under the path that we're pursuing, there will be an opportunity for prioritizing and looking at specific capital improvement projects in the Parks Arena that can be identified and then either funded by, you know, over, over time with our infrastructure fund or by foundation contributions.
Great. Wonderful. And last, we have arts and culture, Mr. War.
Right. Arts and culture, we weren't able to get the Chair or Vice Chair, so I'll go through this for the council. As you know, art and culture's been around a long time. They're, they have three key items that they're proposing, similar to what we had last year. One was to continue to promote public art in San Carlos, and the commission continues to see this as a partnership with the planning commission, looking at major developments in the community, and perhaps talking with developers about adding public art to those developments. And in particular, in their work plan, they suggest public art elements in places like Wheeler Plaza and the Transit Village. The second item is to continue to promote relations with the various groups in San Carlos that deal with art and culture. This would involve city council, commissions, groups like the Fine Arts Association, and various historical associations, such as the, the History Museum in downtown. And then third, the commission proposes to continue their art and culture recognition award program. Council will recall that last year was their first award in this program, and they would propose in the year ahead to once again have a similar competition. So those are their three proposed tasks.
Okay. Any questions? Questions?
So I just have one. So I'm a little confused on the report. As listed there, you have the three items called work plan for 10 and 11.
Right.
But in the detailed brief description, they're a little different, and I kind of focused on the second one, which doesn't, I think, tie to that. It talks about finalized public master plan.
I think I accidentally on the PowerPoint flipped them, so one and two are reversed.
Oh, they're just reversed, okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so my comment is, I'm very much in support, whatever item it is, but yeah, I do think we do need to articulate and maybe formalize what kind of art program we have with Wheeler and Transit Village. I know with approval of the general agreement with camp, for example, I know there's a lot of both artwork internal and external to the building.
Mm-hmm.
And as we continue to, to build major or have major developments, whether or not it's informal or formal, I would, it would be nice to get some input and some comparison of what other cities do and so forth, to still encourage and, and promote sculpture and art and benches and fountains and all that good stuff in, in our city.
Right, yeah. And I know this is an area the commission's been looking at for several years as far as developing a policy. At one point, they were looking at something very formal, and I think at this point, my understanding is a bit more informal in terms of working with community development and planning on specific major developments.
Good. Okay. Well, I must say, just in summary, what do I say here? I think our commissions are, sometimes our eyes and ears are what goes on in the city, but probably more importantly, you're the kind of, you know, the, the, the thinking, and especially thinking about our future and making us the city that we're going to be. And so from the council here, I really appreciate, this is all volunteer work. Many of you work long hours, make a lot of phone calls, talk to lots of people, Google and research and do all sorts of stuff to come up with ideas in each of your area. And you really are the workforce. You really are the thinking that helps council think about the future. So we really appreciate your efforts. And last thing I'll say, it's nice to have talent out there, because I look at people that do get involved. You're very successful in all that thinking, but you're most successful in working with people. And we, we need, and my, my dream is to have someone replace me that is more experienced and better working with people and brighter and all, and, and wish all of you the opportunity to consider, you know, city council at some, some point. But the, the commissions is a great, great place to, to get, get those skill sets and get engaged with our city. So thanks for all the work that you do.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the commission.
Wait, wait, just before we do that. So I have.
Sorry?
I have one public speaker. Kendra Bell, welcome to speak, public comment.
Sorry, didn't know you had a speaker there.
Kendra doesn't speak, so I'm speaking for her. She thinks that Bell Plumbing van is there to mark her hometown, and if you get it removed, I'm going to send her to your house for a week, and you can take care of her, because she looks for that every single time we go on 101, coming or going. And.
Is there an association because of the name, then?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And plumbing. She points out every plumbing truck we see anywhere we go, but then, when it's Bell Plumbing, it's her plumbing truck, and then they put it up there on a pedestal. What more could you want? So just leave our Bell Plumbing alone.
Okay, so we'll look at the, I know in San Francisco, they have a 30-foot pole. Maybe we'll look at that opportunity.
And the truck route, I hope you'll keep in mind the residents of the east side, as well as the businesses and the this and the that and the other thing, because we were led to believe during the discussion about the Holly 101 improvements, that part of that improvement would be to get the trucks off Holly Street between Industrial and Old County, which is very, very important to the people who live there. And the trucks are going to come and deliver their goods, whether they come up that block or not, and the people who live there and the children who play there don't need trucks rumbling by all the time. My last point is, public art, I don't know what public art is. What scares me about supporting public art is all those god-awful statues in Palo Alto that are so ugly and so big. So, you know, to them, that's art. To me, it's not art. And so if we start saying, oh, we want public art everywhere, and that, that crops up.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please, come on up. Can we already have a speaker card? Just reintroduce yourself, be great.
I really enjoyed the economic development presentation. And just, on a personal level, my wife and I go out, you know, I have to confess, we go to Redwood City because, as much as I harp on Redwood City Police, we find Redwood City downtown like an enchanting place to go. For one thing, they have a movie theater. It's just a, and have we ever put thought to what it would take to emulate that? Is that just like, Mr. Mayor, you said, you know, dare to dream, right? Could we have that level of a facelift, a transformation where we have almost, almost like a short-term resort kind of outing place?
Thank you.
Okay, with that.
Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt the commission work plans for 2010, 2011 for the city of San Carlos.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Grokka?
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokka?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes. Okay, moving on to 9B. This is consideration authorizing public works director and city to engineer to send a city comment letter to the proposed high-speed rail alternatives analysis report to the Peninsula Rail Project.
Just a moment, Mayor, let me get the presentation up.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Robert Wile, public works director and city engineer. And in addition to the written staff report, I did want to give you a PowerPoint that shows some of the images, and sometimes it's easier to see it graphically. I want to also thank Brian Mora, who helped a lot with this, who's been really covering for me on this project, has a lot of insight. And Mike Garvey from the Peninsula Rail Project staff is here also. This project is really two projects that we're talking about here on the peninsula. There's the California statewide high-speed train project, an 800-mile system ultimately. And it's intended to be competitive with highways and air travel, and it's, at least as I understand it. And then it would be, you know, just a little bit longer than actually flying here to LA. flying here to LA. But by the time you were to get your, get through security and all those things, it would be time competitive. And then it's intended to be priced at about 85% of the airfare. So I think that's, they're hoping to relieve the demand for travel statewide, either air travel or adding highway lanes by using this high-speed rail system. Of course, it's been successful in other countries, but not here in the United States to date. Now, in the peninsula, the Caltrain is, has had a long-range plan to electrify, which would enable them to offer their commuter service much more efficiently. After they electrify, they can operate more cars on the rails in a shorter period of time and offer better service at a more competitive, more efficient price. So the Peninsula Rail Project is really the marriage of two projects, the high-speed train and the Caltrain electrification here. Here's a map, a statewide map. And what I want to emphasize perhaps on this is, what I've heard from the rail project staff is that this is somewhat of a footrace in that the segments that, there's a limited amount of money, and the segments that are ready first will be more likely to get built first. So you've got a team working very hard here on the peninsula to work through the process, the community outreach process, the preliminary design process, the right-of-way process, and to get this project ready for approval and be competitive for funding in this kind of statewide and actually nationwide competition for high-speed rail. San Carlos's approach has been, come up tacit, hasn't really been a policy discussion at the council level, but among staff, and it seems to be the council's concurrence with this, is to keep the community informed, work within the process of the Peninsula Rail Project, give timely comments, constructive comments, but not try to stop the project. We've been trying to maximize the alternatives available to San Carlos and minimize the impacts on San Carlos, and seeking opportunities to benefit San Carlos. We haven't avoided any direct costs. We haven't hired consultants to help with this. We've been doing this among staff. I want to get into the design alternatives and give you some visuals here. They're really, it boils down to three. We've bounced back and forth with their chief engineer, what they're really looking at. When you read the alternatives analysis report, it looks like five, but he said, well, really it boils down to three. An aerial viaduct with four tracks, a widened berm with four tracks, and a covered trench with four tracks. In other words, four tracks on the same level. And within the aerial viaduct, there are two sub-alternatives. One would be to raise the tracks just enough to clear the roadways, and I'll explain that in a moment, and another one would be, and this is what that would look like, and another one would be to raise it enough to restore the roadways to grade, like this. So the problem is that, like this picture, Holly Street or Britton or Howard, and they're depressed underneath the existing grade separation. And as you widen from two tracks to four, you kind of get a pinch point because you don't have that vertical clearance that is needed for vehicles. So that forces, that forces the structure then to go higher. And that's what, that's what this sub-alternative is about. What you see in the alternatives analysis report actually represents this kind of idea where the structure is elevated high enough where you eliminate this depressed roadway. So that's a possibility, and it would be attractive in some ways, but actually very costly too. So I want to give you some more visuals on those. The aerial viaduct, conceptually, it's like this, and we're picturing four tracks on the level. This could be all one viaduct or built as two. And these photos show some of the advantages of the viaduct from a construction point of view, in that you can build it in fairly tight quarters. You know, you see here, this is right next to an existing roadway, and it's just a pier coming up out of the middle of that. And then once you get the pier up, you can cantilever out over the roadway. So it doesn't take as much of a footprint to build this type of structure. You can make them look pretty good. These are European examples, I think, but you see kind of a Roman arch here and another arch design here. And I was struck by how similar that is actually to the San Carlos grade separation right now. There's some similarities there. Now, the earth berm has a bigger footprint usually because typically there's sloped sides like you see in, this might be San Carlos as it is right now. You can buy some more space by either a retaining wall or a mechanically stabilized earth wall. But I won't go into the berm too much since we already have that. But as with the example I showed you before, this, the earth berm would also need to go up in order to reach that clearance. So the earth berm would be wider and taller than the earth berm is now in San Carlos under this project. Now, the covered trench, at first you think, well, this sounds really good because it's out of sight and it's less noisy. I'm gonna go into the cost in a second, but you do need to keep in mind, when you're looking at this alternative, that it's costly in terms of its construction impacts. You need additional land for equipment, soil disposals, shoring of walls, because you're building this below-ground retaining wall, to build that, you actually have to have room outside of it in order to build that wall. And then all the soil that you take out has to go somewhere. And usually, there's also equipment, you know, next to it to work inside that hole. So it's a pretty big footprint. You can see here in this photo that the road's actually rerouted around this big trench. And so it would be kind of like what you had with the grade separation, but even more so. It would be quite a big construction impact. Now, in terms of cost, this is, the segment 4B goes from southern San Mateo down to Cordillares Creek. San Carlos represents about 40% of segment 4B. The alternatives analysis report breaks the costs down just to that level of detail. And within that, the aerial viaduct is $431 million. The widened berm has this large cost range of $229 million to $1.635 billion, and I can't really explain why that is. The covered trench is $1.742 billion. So as I understand it, that there would be no local subsidy required to build the aerial viaduct, and that other communities in the peninsula, they have objected to the berm, and so they, Caltrans has barely taken that alternative off the table, not Caltrans, but PRP has taken that off the table in terms of an alternative that we're looking at. So they're also willing to look at it here in terms of replacing the berm with an aerial viaduct. Cost difference between the aerial viaduct and the covered trench is, you can see, $1.3 billion. San Carlos, if it were 40% of that, is half a billion dollars, so big numbers. Now, the aerial viaduct opportunities, the letter goes into that somewhat. This seems to be a pretty viable option, so we wanted to give the PRP some input, some ideas. That's really, they've been asking for that. That's what this context-sensitive solutions process is about. And so put a thinking capstone and thought of things, pedestrian and bicycle connections, that's pretty easy to visualize with, the berm right now is really, segments the community in two. You can't get here from there, and this could help restore that. You could do additional street crossings. I would expect that that would be a city cost to do that. But that would allow you to relieve traffic on, say, Holly and Old County Road. Better visibility for east side businesses, I mean, lucky in Home Depot, you see here, we heard about economic development tonight, these are major sales tax generators, but you can't see them very well from the main road, Alcomino Real. You know, they benefit somewhat from being next to it, but not as much as if you could actually see them. And the train depot, the National Register of Historic Places, you can't see that from Old County Road or the east side. When we brought this up, when this alternative came up at the workshop on April 22nd, people started thinking, well, what could you use that land for? And the idea of parking under there was an idea. Another question that came up at the workshop, if you take, let's say you're leaving San Carlos to go to Disneyland, and you're gonna park your car there for a week, you can't park it in the Caltrain lot because that's a maximum of 24 hours. Maybe there could be a long-term parking-type arrangement underneath there. Green street features, we heard tonight about the street trees and canopy, and down in the bottom here is a plan that Calendar and Associates put together a few years ago for landscaping the excess right-of-way along Alcomino Real. And there would be opportunities to do green street features that would slow, sink, or spread stormwater and help with flooding issues. Particularly with the aerial viaduct, you could depress the land under the viaduct and actually use that for additional water storage. Landscaping, I talked about, park sites, I mean, questionable as a park because it's in the middle of a busy street, but maybe a skate park, that might work, a community garden, something, I don't know, but you know, those would be ideas, at least some things to consider. And then the railroad crosses Cordillares Creek at the southern end and Pulgas Creek toward the middle of town here, and both of those creeks just kind of squeak under the railroad right now. This would be an opportunity by raising it up to restore the creeks in daylight, a portion of Pulgas Creek. Issues that we identified in talking about it, the overhead catenary structure, there's a big debate about how to spell "catenary," but I'm pretty sure this is right. And this is what it looks like, this carries the electricity on which the electric trains run. And, you know, you've already got a structure up there sitting above grade, and then you go up from there with these poles and wires, and it is a concern as a visual impact. The, at the workshop on April 22nd, we heard from Bob Doty that there are some really innovative designs that he's seen in Germany which kind of make almost a stealth appearance to these overhead catenary structures. We asked in the letter to learn some more about that. Noise and vibration is obviously a concern, you know, there's already a lot of noise from the train. Just anecdotally, the engine noise would be gone because it would be electric rather than diesel, but there would be more trains running and at higher speeds. So that was, that's something, obviously, that'll have to be studied in the EIR. There were, Peninsula Rail Project was out here just the other week, actually making vibration measurements associated with the train, so they are definitely looking into that. Seismic safety is something addressed in the letter. I understand that after an earthquake, they may need to, like, close all the roads in the vicinity until the structures can be checked, if it's an aerial viaduct. And we want to see if that's, that would really have an impact. I mean, we couldn't get around. So we want to see if that's a fact or not. Old County Road, you see a cross-section from a grant application we recently submitted, and an important facility for pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicles, and we ask that it would not be taken away for the rail project. The Transit Village was the main item of discussion at the April 22nd workshop. Unfortunately, there are more questions than answers right now because we, with these four alternatives, we don't have a right-of-way map. We don't know exactly what their right-of-way needs will be. And we don't know whether, if the Transit Village were to go first, would it preclude any of these alternatives that might otherwise be attractive or not? The good news is that that's coming soon. And Bob Doty started to talk about it, and he started to say that he believed that the alternatives that they're considering could be built within the existing right-of-way, but then he took that back because he doesn't have a document that says that yet. And so late summer, early fall, we should have a document that really helps us evaluate that question. And I think that works out pretty well with the Transit Village review process as it's been revised. Just a few pictures of kind of what's been put out there. This shows what San Jose is considering at their Deardon station. You see on this slide that the, that's the high-speed rail, and that's the, that would be the electrified Caltrain cars. Here's a picture of the electrified Caltrain cars. This is the Transbait Terminal in San Francisco, really striking design. And then this is from Redwood City, apparently a rendering of some of the ideas they have there. So tonight, we want to see if we've missed anything in the letter, from the public too, that we told people that if you, to look on the web, see what's in this letter, if you think we haven't got it, come and tell us. It's not hard to add to it. And then, and basically, just continue to work through the process and look out for San Carlos's interests as we go along. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions first. Am I right here? Any questions? Klein?
Yeah, really doesn't have to deal with this letter sauce. I'll take Mr. Wild's time at another time to explain to me how you electrify a train and have a diesel running at the same time while you're building an electrified train track. But no, I don't have any questions about the letter. I actually really enjoyed the reading. I attended the, briefly, I attended the forum, I had to judge Chickens Ball later that night, but this really addresses all the questions I had, so I think we're on similar wavelength.
Mr. Ma?
Mr. Mayor, we just want to add, this, terrific, and I'm gonna be happy to have council guidance as Caltrain moves forward. Some of the things that I had heard about the right-of-way footprint was a concern from the Loyal Greater East Side neighborhoods that during construction, there may be an encroachment upon Old County Road. I can tell you, having sat through some of the eminent domain discussions that we have for the San Bruno Crossing and just recognizing how laborious a process it is and how expensive it is, there would be absolutely no stomach for Caltrain slash Peninsula Rail Program slash High-Speed Rail to look at Old County Road as additional right-of-way when they own right-of-way on the other side of the track. So for folks who own property on that side, I want to go, that's not a concern to really hold to. But I will tell you, this is terrific. I'm excited about doing the creek restoration and some of the additional landscaping that could come with the aerial viaduct. I know that people are enthusiastically supporting skate parks. We see, even if you're an Oakland fan, that's great. But those are all opportunities that we do have, and the chance to really increase the east-west connections is something very exciting.
Mr. Wild, a couple of quick questions. I don't know whether you can answer it. My understanding is this final, when it's all done, all of this input is all finished, that actually the state legislature is gonna vote on this. Is that correct? They're gonna be the final vote on this thing?
I may be able to help us out. I believe it's the High-Speed Rail Authority, which is appointed by the legislature, who will have the approval on the project.
So it's not gonna be the legislature?
That's correct. It's the High-Speed Rail Authority.
Okay. And then secondly, let's assume that, now, we think that aerial viaduct is the way to go, but the High-Speed Rail Authority says, no, we think, we think we should get a tunnel. We're sort of in a pickle, aren't we? Then they're gonna force us to pay for the extra?
Oh, no, no, I don't--
Just a question.
Yeah.
I think that if the High-Speed Rail Authority picks a particular option, presumably, they're coming with the money. I think a lot of what's been discussed, there's two pieces of it, actually, I thought that's where your question was going. One is because of the transition between the cities, you know, there's a, Mr. Wild can probably explain it better than I, argument between the high-speed rail and the UP about whether it's a 1% or 3% transition. But the gist of that is, if Redwood City wants a viaduct, as they've talked about, and we want a viaduct, it does create a problem, save for Belmont, which wants to be underground because you can't have a roller coaster. So there has to be some agreement among the cities. What we have heard at some of the high-speed rail meetings-- What we have heard at some of the High Speed Rail meetings is that there probably is enough money to either widen the berm within the existing right-of-way or to do the viaduct, but there probably is not enough money to do the covered trench. And so the question, which I think Mr. Wile was alluding to earlier in the slides, was, you know, where do you find that half a billion dollars in San Carlos? You know, do you go to the voters or, you know, how does that found? So that is an interesting question, if that's the direction, you know, we would like them to go.
Well, that's exactly what I said, or what I meant, maybe I didn't ask it properly or perhaps, and that's certainly probably true today because my day's going so well. But anyway, my point is, is that we aren't going to get to decide the final, we're going to put a lot of input in. Unless, like you mentioned, maybe Redwood City and San Carlos think that it should go a certain way, Belmont thinks it goes another way. The High Speed Rail is going to decide and Belmont might be, not loser, but might not get their way or we might not get our way. And what I'm concerned about is if they decide to go a certain way, let's say covered, let's say they go Belmont, want to go to covered, then who's going to provide that extra money? As I said before, you said no to the question, but then it seemed like you said yes, that we'd have to look for the half a billion dollars.
Well, I guess what I was trying to clarify is in the meetings that I've been in with High Speed Rail, and again, because they're still in the middle of their design, I don't know that what I've heard is a Sherman-like statement. But in general, the reading between the lines, I guess I could say, it sounded to me like if the design through the various cities was either a berm within the existing right-of-way or it was an aerial viaduct, that they were picking up the tab. It was my interpretation. And that if it was a covered trench, that they'd be looking towards the cities who want a covered trench to pay the difference. That's my interpretation.
Okay. Again, nobody knows the answers definitively, I know, to any of these questions, so I'm just trying to get a feel for this. Mr. Grocott's not going to come up here and answer any of these questions, but one more question, Mr. Wile. In our city, isn't it true that in our, as you mentioned earlier, that in San Carlos, we have an advantage that will have very minimal, if any, eminent domain situation if we do the first two items, either aerial viaduct or the berm?
I would say so. I mean, you have, you've gone through the pain in that.
That's what I mean. So it's very minimal in our area. We have the space. The thing that always concerns me, of course, is the chicken and egg, whether if the Transit Village does come first, how that's going to be impacted. Because, and I know that the east side folks are always asking that question too, but that's to be decided. But anyway, thanks for your input.
Through the chair. Just to correct one piece of information, the High Speed Rail Authority is a board made of both legislative appointees and gubernatorial appointees. They have also now, I believe it was Wednesday, appointed a new CEO.
Right, I saw that.
So I think there's still, the poor guy has a lot on his plate just trying to figure out what's going on, but a lot of the questions you put forward, everybody is waiting.
Well, I'm sure. I'm just trying to figure out who the final arbiter is going to be because somebody's going to, I didn't say win and lose, but somebody's possibly going to get their way and other people aren't. And I'm just concerned that if somebody decides to go the expensive way, it's one of those unfunded mandates that comes rolling down the road and we're going, well, we didn't want, we have a berm, what are you doing? You know, so I'm just asking. Thank you.
Mr. Grocott?
Couple more questions. I didn't get to attend the San Carlos meeting, so instead I went to Atherton, which is really interesting. People that are normally pretty reserved were not very reserved. The question of ventilation, I didn't see anything in your report, which by the way is very, I mean, you hit on so many things and it's a good group of questions. But I didn't see anything on ventilation and the noise issues in your report, and I think that would be worthy of asking, what those might be, how they might be mitigated. My understanding is with the High Speed Rail particularly, you have a train that's going as fast as a jetliner almost, and so it's pushing air, right? And so if you, especially if you're underground, that air has got to escape every once in a while. And another question that is related to that is if we were to, I see leaning towards the aerial viaduct. However, if, as Mr. Griselli pointed out, maybe we were forced to go with a trench, my understanding is you can have a partially covered trench and how often do you need to have openings in that in order to have that ventilation work? In other words, what's the distance that you can go with a covered trench, which you may want for the advantage of these accessibility issues that you raised about, you know, bicycle and pedestrian things going over, crossing over the trench? How far can you go with a lid before you have to have an opening for ventilation purposes? Question number two is, you've shown an example of Holly Street where you go underneath and you come back up, similar to what we have now. And with a four-track option on a viaduct, I guess two questions. How high is the viaduct? And number two, what's the distance from the point where the road starts to drop to the point on the other side where it reaches grade again? You know, you're doing a, creating a U, so what's the width of that U? I think the answer was given in Atherton, I don't know if it's any different here, but it was 150 feet. So there were concerns about property loss and so forth because that would change the layout of their streets. I don't know if we'd have that situation here. I imagine we could have, but, you know, how are, and so forth. The last question I have, I don't know if you'd want to ask it or not, and I'm not even sure this came up in Atherton, but there was a fellow that I met with afterwards, came up to me, and he showed me a two-over-two option. And I don't know why they're not looking at that. And with a two-over-two option, you could either do a tunnel, it's like a four-quadrant thing. You know, you've got two trains, one's going one way, one's going the other, that being, say, Caltrain on top and then underneath is High Speed Rail, or vice versa. But with the two-over-two option, you could either look at tunnels or you could look at a tunnel with a viaduct over top of that. And that would reduce the width. I think the reason Atherton was interested in that because they don't have the right-of-way that we have. But even with the right-of-way, you still have these issues of going up and down with streets and so forth. So we might ask that question of why they haven't looked at a two-over-two option.
Okay. I think I can cover all three of those. On the ventilation, the open trench alternative is actually deemed to be infeasible in the Alternatives Analysis Report. So that's one of the options that the Alternatives Analysis Report says for segment 4B, that's off the table. I don't know totally why that is, but that's, they say that that's not on the table here. Now, for the covered trench, what I've heard is that the driving factor is actually the diesel freight trains that still have to run on these tracks. And they're going to be creating diesel fumes and so therefore they need to be ventilated. And the ventilation shafts would be every 300 feet. So you'd have these shafts coming up and there would be noises associated with those. So I think that answers that question. Is that the information you're looking for in that?
Well, I suppose on our behalf as a city, I think the question might still be out there for them. Maybe it's going to be in their environmental impact report and that's the time to ask a question, but, you know, what is the noise impact and how to mitigate it?
Right.
So.
Yeah. We could add that to the letter. Doesn't hurt to ask.
No.
Yeah.
Certainly not.
Now, on the, I think I get the second question. You'll have to go back to that slide there. Okay.
That's the one right there.
Yeah. Well, I'm assuming that Holly or the other streets don't get depressed any further, that the depression that you have right now is about as low as you can go without, because with that grade separation project you did, I mean, you can't make grade on either end. I mean, you built walls at the gas stations and that's about as far as you can go. So that means that the structure has to go up. And I think, you know, I've looked at a cross-section of this and it's not much. I mean, it's not much difference. It's less than a foot of change, this effect of widening there. It reduces that clearance by less than a foot. So I would think it's not going to push it up very far.
What you're saying, though, the question I asked was, from the point you start to drop, you go down, you come back on the other side to the point where you reach original grade again.
Yeah.
That was the question in Atherton. What is that distance? And the answer was 150 feet.
That sounds about right.
So I don't know how that would impact us, if it does at all.
I'm saying it doesn't because that 150-foot depression's already there. It doesn't change.
Okay.
And then the two-over-two option, I think you hit on it yourself. The right-of-way is already here, so that's why they're really only looking at that where they have to. Downtown San Mateo is another place I know that that's being evaluated because you've got the movie theater right there, buildings built right up to the right-of-way. They can't go wider without really having major impacts.
However, my question would be if we did the two-over-two, you know, Mr. Griselli said, we've already got a grade set, right? So we've already dealt with the train in a way. But when this comes through, we want to look at what's going to be minimal impact to us. Would the two-over-two help us in any way of having a minimal impact? And especially considering the fact that we're looking at, you know, this land development along the rail corridor. So I don't know. It's a question I have.
It actually could end up taking more land because I think what you, the effect you could have is that basically Caltrain stays on the berm where it is and then the High Speed Rail goes, you know, out on the open land next to the Caltrain track. So they leave the existing grade separation where it is and, because if it's there and grade separated already, they don't really need to touch it. And then the High Speed Rail will go in its own facility, separate and parallel to the existing berm. So it end up, could be a larger footprint in our case.
It's not really two-over-two, though.
Yeah, it would be two next to two.
Two next to two.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. The fact that we're starting from, not starting from just an ad-grade condition, I think complicates it. So, but we did hear, we did hear Tim Cobb, who's the chief engineer for the project, saying, if it's already grade separated, the High Speed Rail project isn't going to pay to redo it if you're going underground, if they don't have to.
And by the way, one of the things that came up at the Atherton meeting is, High Speed Rail, at this point, as a, you know, separate authority, has no agreement, was the understanding as of yet, with the JPB to use their right-of-way. It's talked about, it's assumed, but there's nothing in hand that has that agreement. And to speak to, not to answer for you necessarily, but Mr. Griselli asked about the legislature voting. I think what the legislature has the vote on is some of the funding.
Funding, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Through the chair.
One quick point that came out. There's a common thought that High Speed Rail is going to be whipping through the peninsula at greater than 200 miles an hour. Currently, the operating condition for High Speed Rail would be probably about 125 top speed.
That's correct.
But simultaneously, people should note, the Caltrain speeds upon electrification would go up to potentially 115. So you will see High Speed Rail and Caltrain running roughly the same speed.
Right. And that's the big win for Caltrain out of this is that they can, as I was saying, they can operate much more efficiently and provide better service and track a larger customer base.
Any other thoughts, sir? Question? Mr. Grocott, maybe can I ask you to make the motion with that adjustment?
Perhaps the community may have some comments, sir. The community may have some comments. We did want to open it up today.
Any comments from anybody? Anybody who'd like to speak on this item?
I'm not sure which adjustments were accepted in. I guess the one on ventilation, right? To add a question about ventilation and the noise impacts of ventilation.
Include that in the motion. Can I ask you to do that?
Sure. So moved.
Second. First and second. Your call.
Councilor Ramon?
Yes.
Councilor Griselli?
Yes.
Councilor Grocott?
Yes.
Councilor Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
Thank you. Robert, thank you very much for all your work on it. Okay, we're to 9C. This is approved landscape design standards for El Camino Real and authorized staff to proceed with grant-funded streetscaping improvements to El Camino Real Project C-9490.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Robert Wile, Public Works Director. Again, just wanted to give you some visuals to go along with the written material and the staff report. And we have Peter Calendar here from Calendar Associates. He can, he'll be able to help me out since my knowledge is about an inch deep and he's got a lot more than that. But this project grew out of the Grand Boulevard Initiative and, you know, I guess I was a little skeptical about the Grand Boulevard Initiative at first, but they really had some wins. I mean, they did get a congressionally-marked grant for streetscaping and of that, San Carlos benefits from the, to the tune of almost $300,000. They published some really thorough and well-thought-out design guidelines. And this is amazing to me, Caltrans is actually saying they'll look at, they had breakthroughs with Caltrans and these longstanding issues where Caltrans just says, no, no, we won't do that, we won't do that, we won't do that. But they're really being flexible on things that would enhance pedestrian and bicycle use of the corridor. So that grant leads to this landscape design standards and we want to use those landscape design standards for this grant-funded project initially, but ultimately, these standards would apply to all private development projects and future capital improvements. And total, you saw the grant budget of, the grant was about $300,000. The total construction budget is $367,000. The difference is our local match. And that would fund up to 45, 44 trees and 29 streetlights. I'll go over the alternative bids in the next slide. And, but, you know, that's one concern about this, and I wanted to come back and ask the council about this. Do you want to go forward with this? You might perceive this as fluff, you know, at a time when, you know, it's a tough economic time for the city. But the total annual operating cost is very minimal with $957. And I think you really can make a case for economic development benefits for this type of investment, too. We kept the operating costs down by not putting an irrigation system in. If we put an irrigation system in, the trees are ours and we have to water them and then also prune and maintain them. But if we can establish the trees over an extended plant establishment period, the trees then can be the property owners to maintain under ordinance. And the LED lighting also does a lot to reduce operation and maintenance costs. And I'll go over that a little bit more later. The base and alternate bids, this is in the very last attachment in the report. Again, we have this budget to work with. The budget was based on a very, very rough estimate that was put together when the grant funds were sought. And when we got the designer on board and started putting, figuring out exactly what things were costing, the costs are, the total costs are much higher than the grant amount. So to handle that, we broke the project into segments and the base bid was chosen to come in at the grant amount. So the anticipated low bid is right at the grant amount without allowing for any contingency. I feel okay about that, though, because we've been getting such good prices on our construction projects that I feel comfortable with going forward with the base bid that's basically right at the grant amount, the budget amount. If we get really good bids, we can extend the project from Holly to Bush and if we get excellent bids, we could even go further up to Oak Street. And at least we'll have the design done. If we have future grants, we could go for those. Now getting into the choices that were made, I want to mention that this did go before a council subcommittee of council members Grocott and Klein. We asked them for advice because they were reviewing the Transit Village project and these design standards would apply to the Transit Village project. So... So this tree was selected, recommended by the landscape architect and concurred in by staff, and I think the council subcommittee concurred in this as well. It's a tree called the Zelkova Sarada, or Japanese zelkova. And it, you see the front of the pictures, it's not one you see commonly in peninsula streetscapes, and it's kind of got a elm-like appearance, but it doesn't have the, suffer from the Dutch elm blight disease. And it's a moderate growth tree without, not prone to damaging sidewalks, which I'm particularly fond of. And I guess that's about it on it. On the streetlight, this shape was selected, it's not the shape that we see in, commonly in other streetlights, and we don't see it much in town. It's intentionally different for this corridor. Set this aside, this kind of evokes the Shepherd Staff and the mission bell that currently marks the Royal Road. And it's set up to be a low-level light. In the median islands, you have a 30-foot-tall light, which is intended to light the road. This is really intended to just kind of, just light the sidewalk, and to make it more of a welcoming, pedestrian-friendly environment. And so the mounting height would be 16 feet. It would not have banners, because the banners would force it up taller. And this is to bring the scale of this wide, open roadway down a little bit to make it more pedestrian-friendly. This particular light does accommodate LEDs, and it's good for that reason. One of the ideas that the subcommittee came up with was to look for opportunities for people to basically adopt a light or sponsor a light by putting an emblem on a light. Kind of heard about that tonight with San Carlos together. And we were asked to come back with a couple of options on that, and we talked about putting it up in this hook here, but I'll tell you, when I look at it, and the landscape architect drew this up, and I just, I don't, I personally don't like the look of that. It looks kind of heavy there where it should be light. I don't know. To me, that doesn't look right. And so this base option is the one that I would recommend. And we're showing a San Carlos decal here, but, or a logo, but that's just emblematic of somebody like the Rotary or Lyons that we heard from here tonight. There's a change in the tree grate recommendation. We wrote the staff report, we did a little bit more research, and this one is actually a better choice because it's made with 100% recycled materials. They take old radiators and car parts and melt them down and make tree grates out of them. And so we'd get some, some green points out of that. And it, again, is a distinct design, it's not what you usually see, but it is ADA compliant. These furnishings, we don't have any on the grant-funded project. It's really just the trees and the, and the streetlights. But this is what we were looking for, kind of a traditional look, like somewhat like what you see on Laurel Street. The bench would actually be six feet long, not the eight-foot-long bench that you see here. And the trash cans, Rotary has actually made a, pledged a donation to replace trash cans on Laurel Street. So we're looking at that design a little bit more. We'll be coming back to you with the standard design accounts for both trash and recycling. We actually proposed to use that instead of whatever we're showing here, once that's, once that's finalized. This is just a vision piece from the Grand Boulevard Initiative, and gives you an idea what the, kind of the flavor they're looking at, no real specifics from this picture. But the idea is to make it a, particularly at key nodes, to make it a pedestrian-friendly environment. You're probably not going to be able to sustain this over, you know, the miles and miles of El Camino Real that are there, but at key nodes, like around the Train Depot, possibly other nodes in San Carlos, you might have this kind of, almost a boulevard, a boulevard look to it. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions, and of course, Peter Calendar is here as well.
Questions?
I have none, because I was on the subcommittee and took a look at it. So good.
I'd like to compliment both you gentlemen for doing all the heavy lifting, because then we don't have to pick out designs. So appreciate that. Quick question on the dollars. If you go back to that slide, if you would. You indicated that the grant would be about $367,000. So that, it appears that we'd have to come up with $170,000? Is that correct? Oh, no. Okay. No? The grant plus the local match is this $367,000. And the base bid is $366,000. I'm sorry, let me go back and rephrase the question. We're getting $297,000, and we're putting up how much? About 70. And why does it say 526 on the right-hand side? Oh, that would be the estimate if, if the construction estimate for all phases with contingency added. So at the current estimate and the current budget, we can't afford that. Okay. I'm sorry. So we're moving back, eliminate alternative one and alternative two, move to first column. But we want to get prices on it. I understand. I'm just asking. And the funds that we would use as matching would come out of general fund or? Development agency. Redevelopment agency, okay, thank you. Yeah, it's already budgeted. I just wanted to identify the dollars for folks, you know, for me, for sure, and the rest of it. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. The redevelopment money is already budgeted. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Klein?
No, like Mr. Grocott said, we sat on the committee together, and I agree with Mr. Wild. The emblem design that I envisioned, seen it on paper, it does look incredibly heavy. So I think the base option's better, which is a shame, because I was really excited.
Mr. Mayor, I would just commend Mr. Grocott and Mr. Klein for their good work, and I love this, so.
And even though you mentioned the garbage receptacles are not included in the budget, I am interested in looking at all of our projects on those solar and paybacks with the solar self-compactors and, you know, payback as far as how much that would save and pickups and things like that on any of these projects. So eventually, if we do get to that point, I'd like to understand that.
Yeah, we'll definitely include that kind of financial data when we bring that up.
But without, right now, it's fine.
Do one question, Mr. Mayor. I didn't see anything in here about the entrance monuments for San Carlos on El Camino. Is that something that we would take up at a later time, or?
Oh, well, there is the question of a larger streetscape plan for El Camino Real. And the subcommittee asked about that. We kicked that around. Should we defer this grant-funded project in order to do a larger streetscape plan from one end to the other? And that would, you know, address, that's where you would address those, those kind of details. The decision that I heard from the subcommittee was, well, we'd lose, really, really lose an opportunity here to get good prices on this and to move this forward and get a little economic boost. So, and a good time to do a larger plan would be after you do your zoning code update, where you have some, you are going to have some, to use an engineering view of it, some pretty pictures out of that. And I think that would be a good time to build that momentum.
Here, a motion, then?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the landscape design standards for El Camino Real with the streetlight base option for display of an emblem of a sponsoring individual or business and authorize the staff proceed with the implementation of the grant-funded streetscape improvements on the west side of El Camino Real between Royal Avenue and Oak Street, Project C-9490.
Second. Okay. Motion, second. Grocall, please.
Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
9D, two more items. As regard to council, reports to council from the Economic Development Advisory Committee, which we heard earlier, regarding concern of restaurant saturation of our downtown.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm Sowiki, Economic Development and Housing Manager. At the April 12th council meeting, it was referred to the EDAC for review and recommendation to look at whether there is a saturation of restaurants in the downtown. EDAC reviewed the matter at its April 28th meeting and voted unanimously to support the recommendation that council take no action at this time. EDAC did not see evidence that there was a significant issue with saturation of restaurants in downtown, and considers dining actually to be an advantage of San Carlos that we should be promoting, believes that the city should continue allowing the market to determine the number of restaurants in the downtown. A couple of the factors that EDAC looked at, among 128 spaces counted in the downtown core, only 24% of those are full-service restaurants. We also looked at an independent market analysis, a sales tax leakage analysis, that I was able to get a sort of a free copy of. We looked at a radius of three miles from the, sort of a center point of the downtown core, Cherry and Lowell, and we found that the demand for restaurants is actually two and a half times the supply of restaurants in that same three-mile radius. So one can quibble with the data, the methodology, but it does look like there's a greater demand than we actually supply. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Questions?
Some of the ones that brought this up, I appreciate all the work, by the way, that you and the Economic Development Council did. You didn't include El Camino Real. Was there a reason for that?
We traditionally look at the downtown core as the first two blocks of San Carlos Avenue and the first three blocks of Laurel from San Carlos Avenue. That was just a starting point. We actually, staff brought this to EDAC. We were also looking for, do you want us to investigate this further? If so, what more data would you, would you prefer? So if we were to investigate it further, we could pick a larger area to look at.
Although I assume the percentages would be probably about the same, if not lower. I mean, I can think of two or three, right off the get-go, you know, restaurants that are there on El Camino, but not necessarily every five feet. There's probably, well, as I said, there's probably way more percentage-wise on Laurel Street anyway, so it would just dilute these numbers. But I appreciate the information. Again, you know, someone did ask me to bring this up, and hopefully it didn't involve an inordinate amount of time. But again, I, I think it's good to revisit some of these things, not only in restaurants, but other things that we've done over the years, to make sure that we don't get out of whack on any of this stuff. So again, Mr. Sowiki, thank you very much, and please, my thanks to the Economic Development Advisory Council.
So I just have one question. I did notice Mr. Sowiki and Al Sovey out eating lunch a couple times at 2:00 in the afternoon. I was just wondering if this is part of your research.
And breakfast. Let's see, so my understanding is we don't need any action on this, and we can move on, right?
I think so. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. On to 9E. Just a discussion of the appointment of consideration of policy to fill future commission vacancies. Do we have any kind of report on this, Mark?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll handle that for you.
Well, thank you.
Christine Bowlin, City Clerk. I'm happy to present this report to a packed house this evening. This item is brought to you as a result of your strategic planning meeting with management and council, held in March of this year. Tonight, we're asking you to determine going forward how you wish to fill commission vacancies on your standing committees, commissions, and boards. Traditionally, you have reappointed commission members if they're in good standing, if they have not reached their nine-year term limit, and if they have a willingness to serve another term. However, the youth council is exempted from this traditional policy because they hold interviews separately and recommend the appointments to the council. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
If we're going to start with comments, yeah. Since I was the one who brought this up at that retreat, it's amazing, I get one page, Councilmember Grisilli gets a whole report. I see how it is.
If you want to, if you want to come to school, I'll teach you how to do it.
Anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I know.
I wasn't prepared.
The reason I brought this up is, well, two concerns I had. The initial one was with the initial way we interview applicants. I feel it is very rushed. I, again, today I sat through the Youth Advisory Council commission interviews, and they give each applicant 10 to 15 minutes. They have standardized questions and all, just like we do. But the way we, I feel, and these are just my feelings, the way we appoint, I think it is very rushed to bring five people in a room, ask two questions, and do that three times over, and then, you know, pick a winner. Especially with some of the workload that these commissions are handling. And then my second issue I take with the reappointment process, as a new member on the council, I think I voted for what, two or three now commissioners, something like that? Some are very low. And we are reappointing as standard practice, but I never interviewed any of these commissioners. I don't know what they brought to the table when they interviewed. I don't know the reasons they were picked. And I also would, so I would like to see some sort of re-interview process, where they talk about the years they spent on the commission, where we have a way to, you know, see if the workload's being carried, but also to interview other people, to see, you know, while that commissioner may be a great commissioner, there might be another gem out there we want to bring into the fold. I just feel like giving nine years on a commission in this way, it just, it doesn't sit right with me. And seeing how many applicants we have been receiving lately, even in this time, when most people really are just focusing on themselves, we're getting an incredible amount of applicants. So those are my two issues. I think we need to do a better process of the initial interview, and I would like to see a, at least a minimum of a re-interview of someone who's attempting to be re-upped, or possibly opening that up to an entire interview process with new applicants as well.
Other thoughts? Thoughts on Mr. Klein's thinking, or other thinking?
I'll throw in, I would concur with, with Mr. Klein. I would probably want to see that, we do get a number of applicants. I would support if the mayor wanted to set up a subcommittee to do in-depth interviews of applicants, and perhaps bring back some subset, four or five, back to the full council for consideration. I would, I would feel happy with that type of process. But I would support the re-interview of incumbents, if you will.
I think, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. I think if, you know, again, I'm trying to think of the practical aspect of this. If you have four or five applicants for a position, I think, I think you can spend the time, you know, 10 or 15 minutes. If you have 21, like we had, that's not a workable situation. I don't know whether we'd make the cut. If there's five, then we'll do in-depth. If there's 21, we don't. That's, that's the thing that we're, I mean, the subcommittee, I'm not sure I want to volunteer for that one, for 21, because it would just take an inordinate amount of time. You can look at resumes, you can look at, you know, you could make a, without even talking to people, you could look at resumes and say, well, maybe, you know, somehow do this. Although, the last time, as I remember when we interviewed, I mean, I thought it was one of the most amazing pools of folks, I mean, you just couldn't pick, just reading, because they all had such outstanding qualifications. So I don't know if there's, and again, I'm not trying to throw water on your idea, I'm just trying to say, is there a number? If it's seven, we talk. If it's 10 or eight, you know, what's the, what's the magic number that we have enough time to spend to talk to people? Or do we do that, do we interview everybody for the planning commission? Do we do some for the park and rec? Do we maybe just look at resumes for the transportation? Do we rank them? I don't know that we do that. I don't know that that's a good idea either. And again, I'm not trying to muddy the water, but just thoughts that come to my mind. Re-interviewing people, I, it's hard, you know, people are, as Ms. Bowlin said, if people are in good standing, and again, we, we, in theory, would be monitoring the people on the commission, and maybe that's the hard part, that we're not able to judge, you know, what kind of a job they've done, because we don't go to every one of their meetings. Or maybe we're not sure of how they're doing. That's the other part that's difficult for me. I think, I'll be honest, I think nine years is too long. I think six is, I think, I think every six years, we should have new folks. I mean, that automatically will get new people involved. I think nine is too long. I really believe that. But having said that, that's the easy part of this decision, make it six. But how do you, how do you, how do you, you know, dig down, drill down, so to speak, to find out if folks are doing the job that they, they signed up to do? They may do a great interview, we may appoint them to a commission, and they just don't do anything. And then how do we know that? And I think that's the hardest part of deciding. So I appreciate that you brought this up, and I think it's something we have to look at. But I, but some of the details of it are just mind-boggling to me if we, if we had to have 21 interviews and stuff on what to do, so.
So the only thing I've heard so far that, you know, I So, the only thing I've heard so far that, you know, I agree with in, in its entirety is the six. That's something I was thinking of too. And the reason is because that, it begins to answer what Mr. Klein has brought up, is that, you know, you come on council and there's people serving on commissions that you've had nothing to do with. I think six offers some means of overlap for, when you look at how we're elected and we serve for four years and then there's, but there's always, there's the two and the three and the two and the three that goes on. So, I think six is a good figure because it, it opens up the review process probably to the entire council at some point. The, the only time that I've ever had any difficulty with reappointing a commissioner is there was a fellow that ran one time for city council and came in dead last, and it showed to me anyways, I thought, should that be, should that person be serving on the commission that they're serving on because they were obviously rejected by the voters, you could say. But I, you know, I never took any action on that, but that's the only time that it's come to my mind. Otherwise, I think it's, as Ms. Bowlen reported, you know, as long as you're in good standing, which to me means, no one from the public has made any, you know, criticism or had a complaint about the actions of a commissioner. They attend the meetings, they do their, their due diligence, they give their viewpoints, whether agreeing with the rest of the commissioners or not, you know, they, they do their job. So, without complaints like that, I don't see any reason to, you know, turn somebody off of a commission. But, so I guess bottom line, just the, the six, six years is good. Regarding having a subcommittee, I would not be in favor of that. These people serve the entire council. I want to see them all myself. And the, the way I, I don't know, my, the process I've developed over the years of being on council is just really putting a lot into the written word. You know, these folks take a lot of time, you can tell, in putting in their application. Sometimes they provide supplemental material. So, I, I spend a lot of time on that. And there's only a few things for me personally that I'm looking for when I meet somebody in the interview process. And I usually have those things in mind, and I, and that's what I look for with the individual when they're there in front of me. So, for me, it's, you know, it might be short, but it's sufficient because I, I spend so much time on the written part. I would just add one more comment. It used to be we would do, you know, five-on-one, which was very intimidating. And it was Inga Tickle Doherty that brought up about the idea of a panel. I didn't like that idea when she first brought it up, but it worked really well because it goes a little quicker, ideas can be played off of each other a little bit, the answers people give, and I think it is just less intimidating when you've got, you know, five or six applicants and then a five-member council that you're, you're sitting in front of. So, that process, that part of the process, I really like.
Okay. I'd like to just add a few thoughts here. I think I'm in agreement with the group. What I'm hearing, first of all, is moving from three terms of three years to two terms of three years each. I think I saw some nods ahead. I think that's one thing we should consider.
To the chair?
Yes.
That particular change would require municipal code amendment.
Okay.
So, that's not really a policy decision that you can make tonight, but we can bring it up at another meeting.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
We can discuss it though, right?
You can discuss it. It's just the final action on that can't be part of a policy.
So, what I'm saying, I'm, I'm hearing from consensus on a shortening of a term. I think what's driving that is there's great demand, there's qualified candidates, overall time of, of service, it's a reasonable time to shorten them. We could consider that. Second thing I will say is, even though I do agree, Mr. Klein, your comment, the interview process is shortened and almost rude, whatever the word would be. I'm, I'm very impressed though with the candidates that we brought on. It, it seemed to work, although maybe we could miss because some of the candidates, the other candidates we didn't pick were, were so strong. But I could think of three or four people that we brought on in the last two years are very, very strong. And I'm basing that on, on being at some of the meetings, reading the minutes, talking to those people on the street, calling those people, asking them their opinions because they're in that business or they commission and getting thoughts. So, the process works well. I think the thing I only have a problem with is, again, the, the interviewing, having someone re-interview for their second term against other candidates. I do think a decision needs to be made when someone is up for their next term, that it's not a given, that they, we do it automatic. I do think we do have a responsibility, I, in the last year or two, have looked at attendance. I've talked to the chair people, I read minutes, and once in a while, I'll see something in there where someone's making a motion or making a recommendation, and I'm kind of scratching my head saying, is that a kind of person with that kind of thinking? If I see it two or three times, there have been one or two concerns that I've had. And because it's been automatic, it's been difficult for us to, to question the reappointment in a council meeting, in a, in a meeting. So, I'd, I'd like to go to a point to where it, it is, I mean, generally, we would reappoint, but it's also very acceptable to do our, our duty and get input from these people and, and try to retain the high quality that our commissions really need to, to get their work done. So, that's my thought about re-interviewing. I think once a decision is made, then not to appoint, then we would interview. I think that would be the only, only change I, I would, would have to that. Other thoughts?
Well, I have a question then. So, would you want to take the reappointment off the consent calendar then and put it as, as new business? Because I'm wondering if we make a decision, how, what's the process say, you know, fictitiously there's a commissioner three of us don't like, but it's on the consent calendar, we're not always calling each other about the consent calendar, plus you can only talk to one other person. I mean, it's, what do you see as the method of that? That's why I wanted the re-interview process, because I believe that would be the method of that, to actually have a discussion.
The process, if I may, would be, if it's on the consent calendar, you'd pull it off. If you get support during the council meeting to, that you want to see this opened up to an interview process. It doesn't necessarily mean the person's not going to make it through that interview process, but if you have a concern about a commissioner and you say, you know, I'm, I'm not ready to just reappoint, you know, blanket reappointment, I'd like to do an interview process and see whether the candidates we have out there. If you get the support on the council at that time, you got it.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Grocott on that, and I think, I mean, in my mind, I don't want to make this like the U.S. Senate where you, you know, automatically get a, sort of get a pull it off. I think that you would, I mean, to me, if, if you've said Mr. Jones or Ms. Smith, you felt shouldn't be on, I'm not pointing to you, just to say you brought it up. I'd want to hear some pretty solid information on what, because I wouldn't know about it. You might, and I might not know about it, and then I might be more in tune to, to re-interview. But I think if we, if we cut it back, and again, we can't do that tonight, but if we cut it back, I think that's going to increase the opportunities for people to get on. And, and again, it, it's, your point is well-taken. We, we can't just necessarily rubber stamp all this stuff. And I think that's what, where you were going, and I, I applaud you for that, and I, but I, but I want to make sure that there's a, I don't necessarily agree that we need to re-interview unless there's some awfully valid, in my mind, valid points to, to do that. And as Mr. Grocott mentioned earlier, when I applied for the planning commission in 1994, it was five-on-one. And I don't know how long that took, and I don't know how many applicants they had, but it took a long time, and before your time or before mine. And I think the way we do it, as Mr. Grocott said, I, I do a lot of the reading and I look at this and I, I try to figure it out and I, you know, again, it's all a judgment and, and it's hard. It's, you know, like a snap thing, but we have been blessed with the applicants that we've had. And, and even if we perhaps might have made a mistake, I don't think a mistake is the right word. I think we've just gotten possibly a, you know, a, a 9.5 instead of a 10, you know, because we've just have so many great applicants. So, I mean, my, my point on this would be to, to, to continue the way we've been doing it, when, when, and, and again, have council come up with, with an ordinance change for the six, and then, and then if people need to bring something up, bring the ammunition, so to speak, and then, and we'll look at it. I mean, I know I will.
So, one question then, just to gauge our council, then the last point would be, do we do a subcommittee or is council total involved? I've heard those things from people here.
I will weigh in on that. I have a different approach to hiring people. I mean, to the extent that the interview goes on, as we do right now, Mr. Grocott prefers to look at the resume, and to some extent, that's, I'm, I'm going to put a significant percentage of your decision is based on the paper and how they write. That's not the way I hire, and that's not the way that it works for me. For my decision process, it is not served by the presentation of a resume and a one or two-minute interaction. I don't feel that I can go back to the public and say that I have had a thorough review of these applicants and that I picked, picked the right one or a good one. Now, we're very blessed that, I mean, to some extent, we're shooting fish in a barrel. We've got great candidates. But do I think that the decision process was served? Absolutely not. I have no problem with the mayor, you know, to some extent, we, you know, we'll probably budget half hour, 45 minutes when candidates come together. So, it's a compressed timeframe that we have. Again, if there are going to be 21 applicants or something that is significant, I would support a subcommittee at the, at the discretion of the mayor to, to say, let's weed through this. But for me, the interview process is not a cursory thing to make certain that somebody can fog a mirror.
Yeah.
You know, this is, this is a real part of the process, and I want to make certain that this person, you know, the lights are on, somebody's home, and we can actually do something.
Mr. Klein, where are you with the sub, subcommittee or total?
I'd be, I'd be okay. Well, I would be willing for the five of us to interview 21 people and take the time to do it. I don't mind taking extra time, but if the time's an issue, then I would support a subcommittee based on the mayor's discretion. I also think something should be brought up. We keep talking about the interview from our side. As someone who has interviewed very recently, many times for commissions, there's a feeling, and I've spoken to other people who've been interviewed with me, in that it's incredibly insulting sometimes, that you give your time, you want to volunteer, and you get about five minutes, two questions, that's it, and then you're told, oh, well, we've heard everything we need to hear, now move on. And I, and I think you have to look at it from that viewpoint as well, as these people are willing to give their time, so we should give some of our time to actually hear them out and hear what they have to say, and I don't think two questions is enough.
Okay. So, more time. Thoughts on that?
Well, you know, I can't disagree with more time. I, I think it's, it's, it's a delicate balance of how much more. And I'm, I'm, to Mr. Ahmad's comment and to Mr. Klein's comment, I don't have a problem with, if we're doing it in, in 45 minutes or an hour, we extend, we double the time, you know, double it. But, but having said that, we can, you mentioned that it's incredibly rude for people, and you've spoken to people about it, but the line still, people keep volunteering.
Yeah.
So, obviously, they're not talking to each other because otherwise, everybody go, well, we're not going to do that anymore. We've been very blessed. You know, people still think that they want to come through and do it. It, I mean, it's, it's, it's a very difficult, I mean, when we, when I hired people, and I've hired people also, I would look, I wouldn't even speak to them. I'd look at all the resumes. Again, it was depending on the situation, and then I tried to cull from that. And again, you know, you'd cull down because I couldn't talk to 50 applicants or 50 faxes that I got. It'd be impossible. And I don't know how you guys do it, but I couldn't do it that way. So, I'd have to cull it some way and then get it down. Now, we could do that. We could, we could look at the resumes, and if we have 21 applicants, we could all look at them, and then we could come in and say, without even talking to them, cull it down to the top five. I'm not saying we should, but I'm just saying we could do that. If, if, but again, some people, again, how they do it, you would rather hear them than, than read about it. And again, depending on, I think a lot of it is, what's the job that they're going to do? They're not going to be engineers, they're not going to be rocket scientists, they're not going to be computer programmers. They're going to be volunteers who hopefully can think on, on all these commissions. I mean, that's really all you're asking them to do, and hopefully they have an affinity for one of them, but they don't have to have a skill set. And I, just because you're on the transportation community doesn't mean you have to be in transportation or planning, you have to be in planning, in my mind. Otherwise, we, then we just take all the people that have all experience and eliminate everybody else. So, it's, it's a fine line. I, I don't know. I, I'd be willing to extend the time and double the time.
And I'd be fine.
And, and make it 10, you know, instead of an hour, instead of starting at six, we start at five.
Yeah.
And, and give more people an opportunity. But I think we, I, as Mr. Grocott said, I think we all should do it, because then I think we all get an input. I'm sorry, I keep you after.
I would just go for more time if, if that's what's needed. And the reason being is because the thing that concerns me about a subcommittee is I've seen the dynamics of us operating, you know, after we've met everybody and then we start talking, and, you know, the whole, the whole dynamic of five people is that sometimes, you know, sometimes you'll have two people who are really strongly in favor of a certain candidate and, and two others who are over here, and sometimes it's left to you as the mayor to say, well, okay, I see your points over there, I see your points over there, I'm going to go with this one. And, you know, I've seen sometimes a sea change in the direction that I think things are going to go on who's going to get selected, you know, based on the mayor's decision, not just you, but, you know, over the years. And you don't get that with a subcommittee. So, I, I just, I would rather spend more time. And just a closing comment, if we're, if we're close to the end here, I do, you know, I know people watch our meetings and so forth. I don't want any of our commissioners or anybody to feel like they're, you know, sometimes, somehow we're after them or anything like that, because we're certainly not. They all do a, a great job, and, you know, it's volunteer work. So, to me, I'm just looking at the process and open, certainly opening it up a little bit more to fresh ideas. We do have a lot of good, good applicants, and to give more people the opportunity to serve. You know, I think years ago, probably thinking back, maybe about 15 years ago, we were in just the opposite vote, which may speak to why they had nine-year terms, because you put out an application and, you know, you just didn't get that many people, so, but we don't have that problem right now.
Okay.